Welcome to the January meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees. I'm Greg Muesel, the chairman of the board. Welcome to everybody in the audience and those that are watching later as it is videoed. Would you help me start the meeting by honoring our country and stating the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first thing I want to do is thank the immediately passed chair, Jared Cook, because I'd forgotten that this is a harder position than it looks, and you made it look easy for two years, so bear with me tonight.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a roll call and recognition of visitors. Kaitlyn Murphy is filling in tonight for Terry Schlitz, who is out ill, and so this is Kaitlyn's first meeting doing this, so we're all going to learn together.
Tonight's visitors include Christopher Reeves, David Smith, Barbara Smith, Dick Carter, James Addy, Reese and Owen Everett, Michael Ashcraft, and Lindsay Constance.
Welcome. Next item is awards and recognition.
We have no awards or recognition tonight.
Before we move into the open forum, I think there are a couple of things we need to do as the first meeting of 2020, and the first thing to do is to recognize that there are three members of the board starting a new term tonight. Nancy Ingram and I were re-elected, and trustee Laura Smith Everett was elected to the seat previously held by David Lindstrom. Trustee Ingram will be serving her second four-year term on the board. She's been elected secretary after serving as vice chair the last two years. She will also chair the Human Resources Committee, serve as the board liaison to the Community College Foundation, and serve as president of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, our statewide association. Trustee Ingram, I'll offer the floor for any comments you might have.
Well, I would just like to thank everyone here and look forward to working with everyone on the board. We had a couple of themes during our campaign that included accountability and transparency. I would also remind everyone that we have several other themes of confidentiality, understanding, and trust. So as we go for the next four years, I look forward, like I said, to working with everyone. Someone told me when I ran the first time, you always need to keep in mind "for the greater good," and I would remind everyone in this room that that's how I believe we all serve, is for the greater good. And sometimes that looks like it's in favor of staff, perhaps students, maybe it's community, maybe it's administration, but ultimately, there are seven sets of eyes who are all looking at differently at everything that comes up, but ultimately, we unite behind our mission. So I'm looking forward to the next four years. Thanks.
Thank you. Trustee Laura Smith Everett will be serving her first four-year term. She will serve on the board, on the management committee, which, as I've noted before, is really the heavy lift committee, as well as human resources. Welcome to the board, Laura. Any comments?
I do, and I was a little more formal and going to be reading something. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I wanted to begin by thanking David Lindstrom, who served for eight years on this board and whose spot I am taking. Thank you, Mr. Lindstrom, for your service to our community. While it's pretty evident, I won't be literally filling your shoes. I do plan to dedicate myself fully to the cause, as he did. I wanted to thank the larger community of Johnson County, who elected me along with trustee Nancy Ingram and chairman Greg Muesel. I am very grateful for all of the support that you have poured into getting me here today. I know you've had a great deal of hope invested in me, and I intend to honor your votes by working tirelessly to ensure our community college is thriving and a thriving place for years to come. Championing, goodness, championing, supporting, and guiding efforts that support students is a lifelong mission of mine. I look forward to governing a place that is so instrumental in making Johnson County a great place to live, work, and raise a family. Speaking of families, I wanted to recognize one of mine, which you can probably hear, my family this evening, and thank them all so much for their support. In the audience, we have my parents, Barbara and David Smith. Thank you in innumerable ways for all the ways you rallied behind me and supported my family. To my husband, James, my rock of 24 years, my biggest cheerleader, my best friend, my best quality control agent, thank you for all the quiet sacrifices you have made. And to my three children, Addy, Reese, and Owen, you are my inspiration for doing crazy things, like running for office. I so desperately want to be part of making the world a great place for you to be able to thrive in. Thank you for letting me do this, and I love you. To the JCC faculty, staff, and administrators, I wanted to assure you that I intend to work alongside you to make this the best community-centered, community college it can be. We may have a difference of opinion, I may ask a lot of questions, but I pledge it will always come from a place of respect with the purpose of giving our JCCC students the very best there is to offer. And finally, and perhaps most importantly, to the students at JCCC, to the single mother, the high school student, the returning adult student, the first-generation college student, the second- or third-time-around student, you are the most important asset this county has. When you succeed, we all succeed. I am here because of you and for you. If there is anything I can do to help you in any way, do not hesitate to reach out. I will not be able to change your grades, but I want us to rethink every single policy and every budget decision with you at the center of it. You are important, you are valued, and I look forward to championing your success in any way that I can. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my comments.
Thank you. We look forward to working with you, Laura. My comments are, first of all, to thank everybody here and anybody who watches this on TV later because of your interest in Johnson County Community College. It's important that the community view what is happening at the college. There's much to appreciate here, not the least of which for this calendar year 2020 will be the first full year of the Fine Arts and Design Studio, the Hugh Libby Career and Technical Education Center, a new welcoming center that truly does welcome people and visibly say, "We want you to come into Johnson County Community College." New athletic fields that focus on our women's softball team and our men's and women's soccer with handicap-accessible facilities, parking, and restrooms, and those are important things to celebrate in 2020. We have 26,000-ish students that come here over a full year of individual, different students, over two semesters. In the summer, we have an unparalleled faculty, we have professional staff that's committed every day to make this place run, and we have a community that supports us to the extent that we can give $1.2 million in private money scholarships each year and raised over $1 million last year at Summit Chanted Evening. So there's an awful lot to be thankful for, and I hope we will all commit ourselves to this year being a productive and positive year. Couple things on my intent. My intent is to meet with each of the trustees individually to find out ways we can improve how we function as a board, how we communicate to all of the stakeholders that we have. I've already started that with some of you, to schedule at least two Saturday retreats during the spring semester so we can have some work sessions beyond the formal boards, and to support, probably most importantly, the excellent search committee we have so that when we choose our next president of the college, we get the absolute best person we can get. A couple of things of kind of plumbing nature. The seating up here is similar to what we had in the last two years, but we've kind of formalized a protocol so that we have it going forward. Terry Schlitz likes to run on protocol. The chair and the vice chair and the treasurer will sit on this side of the president, and then the secretary, and then the board members in order of seniority to the left. In order to assist Terry, and in this case, Kaitlyn, because the board members are on both sides, speaking on both sides of her, I'm going to try to implement a practice where I identify who made the motion, who seconded the motion, specifically what the vote was, and if there are no votes, if it's unanimous, say it's unanimous. If there are no votes, identify who voted nay or who may have abstained, so that there's a clear record. Sometimes they have to go back to the video, and even that's not particularly helpful. Assisting our audience and other board members last month, I don't think Roberta Eversledge is here this evening, but she brought up the fact that there are places and maybe some dead spots in the audience as far as hearing. We have looked into that. We have five speakers back there. Some are dedicated to recording for the videos, some are connected to our mics. They're being tweaked, we're looking at it, we're trying to do a better job on that. So be assured that we think we'll do better in the future, but I've been told that the most important thing we could do is to have trustees lean forward and speak into the mics when they're talking, and for those of us who are soft-spoken, such as myself, we will try to speak up in volume so that everybody can hear us. Sometimes we ask questions of staff in the audience. If it's anything more than a couple-minute quick answer, we'll probably ask you to come to the podium so that we do have a better record of that. With respect to executive sessions, my plan is to let you know 24 hours in advance if we do not, whether we do or do not intend to have one. Just because we say that we don't intend to have one doesn't mean we might not have one, but especially for those of you with children at home still, I think it's fair to give you an idea of how late we might be, and that is at least some indication of it. And also, depending on the executive session, how many people need to be involved, we will leave the room and go to the Lidl room instead of kicking the public out of this room, so the public can wait in this room. Those are the things that I intend to try to accomplish, and hopefully, they are things that the board will agree to, and if you have differences of opinion, obviously, I want to hear that. The next thing is the open forum. I'll read what we do at the open forum with a preface that we have nobody signed up tonight. The open forum section of the board agenda is a time for members of the community to provide comments to the board. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of people intend to speak, in which case the chair can limit to less than five minutes. To be recognized, individuals must register at the door prior to each board meeting, prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are asked to remain at the podium, should be respectful, civil, and are encouraged to address individual personnel or student matters directly with the appropriate college department. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when matters concern personnel or other student issues, or matters that are being addressed through established grievance or suggestion processes, or are otherwise subject to the review by the college or the board. As we have no speakers this evening, we will move on to the board reports. First item on the agenda is a student senate report because the students are not yet back on campus. Will come back next Tuesday. We don't have the student senate report tonight, so the next item will be the college lobbyist, Mr. Carter.
Thank you, Chair Muesel. You have my printed version of the report before you, and so I won't go through that. It's somewhat brief, simply because I gave a fairly lengthy forecast in December, and not a lot has gone on until just this Monday, when the legislature reconvened on January 13th. Governor gave her state-of-the-state on, yesterday, Wednesday, the 15th. There were no real surprises in her speech. It was about Medicaid, transportation, tax policy, the Kansas economy. Those were kind of the high points that she picked on. Not a lot of detail in the state-of-the-state address. And then this morning, the budget was released, and we're still poring through the larger budget document, but I have a few snapshots that I wanted to tell you about as it relates to higher education and higher education budgets. The big news, I suppose, was last week when the governor and senate majority leader Jim Denning gathered together for a press release on Medicaid expansion. That issue was going to be the big elephant in the room the entire session, and I think in some ways that took a lot of pressure off the start of the legislative session. The bill is out now, and is scheduled for hearings next week. We'll see if the hearings kick off the way they're scheduled. I'm not sure if there'll be any changes or not, but it is a big issue. There's two days set next week for proponents, and then opponents will have Monday and Tuesday of the following week to offer comments in a public hearing setting. Let me give you a little bit of an overview as it relates to higher education budget. Initially, the Board of Regents requested from the governor $95.3 million. Almost instantly, $10 million of that went away. It was for some building maintenance at the state university level, and so that request became around $85.3 million. What was realized in the budget, when the budget recommendations came out this morning, was about $4.5 million for the current year for Excel and CTE program. And remember, we always bill in arrears, and so even at the end of the fiscal year, there could be some truing up in the next fiscal year for those dollars. That brings the recommendation from $30.6 million to $35.1 million for that program in the current year. The higher-ed block grant, if you will, ended up being about $14.8 million. Now, that breaks down to about $11.9 million for state universities. They had asked for 50, and that was the trade-off for not increasing tuition. So I'm sure we'll have some of those conversations throughout the rest of the legislative session. Little over $200,000 for Washburn, $1.1 million in tiered credit courses, and $1.5 million in non-tiered credit courses for community colleges and technical colleges. And then for fiscal year 2021, which is the bulk of what the budget discussions will be about this session, an additional $8.5 million in 2021 for the career and tech ed programs. So that's the initial look. I'm sure that there's going to be some additional details. Those are the governor's budget recommendations, as you may recall, last year, and I don't think this will likely happen this year, but there were some definite plus-ups, specifically in the community college sector, for additional dollars that were recommended in the governor's initial budget recommendations last year. So those conversations will begin February, March, when we start having those budget meetings and hearings, and we'll see what happens as far as ways and means and appropriations from the senate and the house respectively, and how they address those budget recommendations. One of the things that we'll be following pretty closely as well are issues, we always follow issues related to capers. The governor has recommended a reamortization of the unfunded obligation through a 25-year bond. That did not go over last year. It's already proved controversial this year, and so I think that will be a big hang-up in the budget, the way the budget plays out. It's a common tool used by governments, and when you reamortize bonds over a long term, you can use dollars upfront, and some of the proposals that are out there are probably intending to use those dollars, although we don't know specifically. But again, that will begin to play out, but house and senate leadership have already balked at the idea of extending the bonds for another 25 years as it relates to capers. This is sort of the coming attractions section, and we learn about things sometimes before they happen. Sometimes we don't learn about them until they're introduced, but we do have a little bit of a heads-up on a couple of things that are probably coming our way that will impact community colleges. One of them is permissive legislation as it relates to mergers and affiliations, and you can think of that in terms of community college to community college, community college to tech college, any number of those machinations to a state university or a college. And so, in essence, what it would do is, any time there is a merger or affiliation presently, specific legislation is required to allow that to happen. This would be permissive legislation that would allow and/or encourage those types of mergers or affiliations to occur. We plan to see that bill introduced in the coming week. There will be likely a big press conference, I think, as it relates to maybe economic development or the Kansas economy, from one of the legislative caucuses probably next week, and the program, I don't know if it's going, I don't know what the name of the program is going to be called, but it will relate to free tuition, and it will be the last-dollar type of program, whereas students would need to go through the FAFSA process. It's based loosely on a Florida program. Don't ask me for the details, because I'd have to go back. I just learned about this this morning, and I would have to go back and research the Florida program a little bit, and then Tennessee, a little bit of a combination of Tennessee. So that, we anticipate hearing more and learning more about that program next week. And then finally, this is a conversation, I think, that will need to occur, and it's a little bit more on the outside, but there is an application to community colleges. I was informed that, and asked to relay, that there will be legislation related to ADA accessibility placards for K-12 vans or vehicles used to transport K-12 kids. Presently, those placards, as I understand it, or as it was explained to me, are only available on an individual issuance basis, and so that legislation will be coming, and the question then became, what about community colleges, tech colleges, or other institutions of higher ed? And so I think that the KACC will likely be looking for input on that particular issue. That kind of captures, it's been a short week. Tomorrow is a pro forma day for the legislature, which means they will not be meeting. Of course, we're expecting weather. I don't think they knew that when they planned the legislative calendar, but that's sort of the kickoff week for the legislature, and we do a lot of informational meetings the first several days, first week or two, until bills start getting in the mix and hearings commence. So I would stop there, Mr. Chair, and attempt to answer any questions as I'm able.
Trustee Snyder.
Dick, thank you. You mentioned on the tuition-related initiative that it was coming out of one of the caucuses. Can you share which, House, Dems, Senate, Republicans?
I think it will be coming out of the House, and I think we'll learn more next week.
Okay. And then, this is for you, or chair, former chair, president. When a proposal comes like that, how does the college's position on a bill like that get formulated, especially one that touches on issues this board has discussed somewhat at length the last six months or so?
I think the first thing to do would be to get a summary of the legislation from Mr. Carter, and then we can discuss it at a meeting of the board. I think it kind of depends on where it goes. If it looks like it's going to have hearings and things like that, there are a lot of bills that we've tended to get wound up about that don't have any chance of going anywhere. We do not have a formalized process of analyzing each piece of litigation.
And that's what the KACC is for. That piece of legislation will go in front of all 19 schools, probably the presidents, and that discussion will be led by Heather Morgan. And then from that group, a position will be formed. That's, I think, normally how these are treated. Yeah, and I would say also that that was one of the reasons that we developed the internal document, the Statements of Principle, that we use to help guide how we analyze that legislation, and the college has already, administration has begun some conversations about what a different program might look like that could be similar to that. So we kind of already have some of that foundation available, but those are both... Yeah, I believe only one time that I'm aware of that we did not go along with the other schools, and that was 1999 for Senate Bill 345. We were the only school, Dick's laughing, we were the only school that opposed it.
Which placed the Board of Regents in more of an authoritarian role over...
A coordinating...
A coordinating role.
Role.
Excuse me. Trustee Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dick, you mentioned economic development, and at the KACC meeting and other meetings I've attended, one of the issues, among many, health being one, but others, was the discussion on broadband internet. Are you aware of any legislation pending to support broadband internet, particularly in rural Kansas?
Well, there is a task force that will be making recommendations on rolling out broadband deployment. That, again, will be a conversation that's held in a legislative committee. There may, I can't recall if it occurs in the rural committee, can't even remember the name of it, or if it'll be in a separate committee, but there will be conversations about that.
Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, why is there $6.8 billion in unfunded liability? Is it just the natural operation of the fund for capers, or...
It's a product of many, many years of borrowing from capers, not unlike, in recent years, the state using money for transportation to fund other areas of state government.
But it's gone back, I just quickly found something that said, it's gone back to at least 1993, so administrations have continuously borrowed from it.
Yeah, it's not a partisan issue. Everyone loves to do it.
Thank you.
I don't know so much that they borrowed from it, but they did not fund it according to actuarial tables, so therefore, we are behind, and I think we're in the 60% or 70% funded range.
If I may just follow up.
Sure.
So that means it just didn't grow in a necessary way to fund the liabilities that we had coming due. Does that make sense?
We did not, the legislature did not appropriate funds necessary to create a pool that would pay for all of the retirements that we know are likely to come.
It's true, Mr. Chair. You're more diplomatic than I am. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Carter? Thank you. I think we're probably somewhat hopeful that what we heard at the KACC, Kansas Association of Community College Trustees in December from our own Senator Molly Baumgartner, was that nothing would happen because the energy and wind would be sucked out of the capital wide Medicaid expansion, and that maybe a compromise there gives us the opportunity to actually act on some other important state priorities. So that gives me at least some hope that maybe we'll get to other priorities earlier than May.
I think you're right.
And we'll count on you to do it.
I'm your man.
Thank you. The next report is from our Faculty Association, Dr. Melanie Harvey, professor of chemistry, president of the Faculty Association. Mr. Carter, welcome. Happy evening.
I think you got all my titles in there. I have two. It's not that many. No. Okay, so first, I would like to say, welcome to Laura's trustee, Smith Everett. So glad to have you. I think it's extra exciting to us because she is a current public school teacher and actually a member of KNEA, just like I am, and we're affiliated with KNEA, so that's kind of exciting to have a trustee with that perspective. So welcome, and thank you for serving. And thank you to all of our newly-elected folks for agreeing to four more years of this job that doesn't pay a lot, last I checked. Okay, so this week is our professional development days for faculty. We came back on Tuesday, actually. It seems like a really, like it's been a long time, but that's just because our schedules are incredibly full, but it's been a good week. There's lots of sessions, lots of meetings, including, we had an all-faculty meeting this morning, and we covered some very interesting topics, like we heard a report about some student needs being met in the area of communication and technology accessibility. So that was really nice to hear, some of the exciting things, the ways that our institution is accommodating student needs when it comes to communication and technology. We also heard from the person that represents the contract for the DEI assessment audit that's being done, so that's our diversity, equity, and inclusion audit that's going to take place. And basically, he talked about starting where we are, identifying our needs, and kind of the process and what's going to happen, and there will be more information on how we can get involved. And there have been lots of breakout sessions, different sessions that people can attend on all of the things that have been covered this week, too, that are more specific. We also heard, one of the more interesting ones, was from the International and Immigrant Student Services Office, and I think I learned a lot, I think a lot of my colleagues learned a lot about what they do for our students. They said that they have, we have over 1,300 international and immigrant students, and I think sometimes we have students that have not gone and been identified, too, as well, that could fall into that population. They talked to us about F1 students in particular, being here to study and then planning to return to their home country, and how there's like strict enrollment requirements for them, and that if they were to have to drop something, that that could jeopardize their status, and the consequences are becoming very severe and very quick with our current political climate. And so they just talked to us about, you know, faculty-initiated withdrawals, to be very cautious about that and the implications that it can have. So sometimes, we might, if a student isn't attending, be able to withdraw them from class so that they don't fail a course. And you might think you're doing them a favor for a lot of... For a lot of students, you are doing them a favor, but they can always, I've always been aware that it can have implications for financial aid, for status, but especially they communicate to all our faculty that it can have serious implications for a student with, some kind of, an international student with that type of visa. So, that was really great information. It's nice to like learn things that you're like, okay, I didn't know that, I really need to realize that. There's been, I just thought I would share that, because it was very interesting. There are PDD sessions and meetings that have been all week, and we had some faculty, a cohort of about 14, that went to a master teacher workshop, where they got away from campus and really shared teaching ideas. And I went a couple of years ago, and it was wonderful. And so, I know they had a great experience, and it's really inspiring to learn from your colleagues. And I know most, almost all of our deans were able to attend a dinner with them last night, and I think, Dr. McLeod, you were able to attend, too. So, they had a great time, and I've heard some really good reports from that. I also got to attend a foundation meeting last night, and was able to share with them some examples of ways that their work has directly impacted students, and our work with students in the classroom, things, opportunities that we can provide for students, and just things, the way that our college is providing for students that have needs, just in their lives. And so, I was able to thank the foundation for their work and give some examples, and that was really meaningful. Last weekend, Jim Liker was supposed to attend, but the weather was really bad, and Dennis Arjo and I were still able to attend a KNEA Higher Ed Summit in Topeka. And we were able to meet with the local union leaders of a bunch of higher eds across the state. So there were a number of community colleges, all the way from like Garden City, people drove pretty far ways to get there. And then we also had Pitt State there. So we had a lot of community colleges, and we had one of the Kabor schools, too. So anyway, we met, and we talked about things like negotiations, issues that have come up, you know, challenges, our experiences. We were able to share, we talked about the legislative agenda for KNEA, and how that impacts community colleges, and the important things in the KNEA legislative agenda that are, things that are really important to community colleges. We talked about the Higher Learning Commission, and sort of like changes, both going through accreditation processes, and also changes in, like sort of requirements for qualifications of instructors, and we kind of shared how that's impacted different places across the state, and also shared governance experiences. And it was the most valuable thing I've ever been to with KNEA, because they put all the higher eds together, and we just have such shared, common experiences and issues. And I would say that one thing we learned was they have a lot in common, but things look a lot different at a lot of different places, too. And so, there's a lot to be learned from one another. And I wanted to share that, too, because I think making those connections, we're going to be able to foster relationships throughout the state with our colleagues. And KNEA's indicated that they plan to host that event every year, and also provide more opportunities for us to connect with other higher eds. And I think we're going to learn a lot from that. I will say that we learned that the Faculty Association here at Johnson County Community College is in excellent shape, and I was very proud of our faculty and our association and our college. So I find myself bragging a lot when I get around people from other places, and I'm very, very proud to work here. I do want to announce that we moved our party from, usually, it would be tomorrow night, but because of the weather, we don't know what's going to happen, we've moved it to next Friday night. It'll be the same place, same time, but it won't be this Friday, it'll be the following Friday. And of course, all of you are invited to attend our party and get to talk to some of our faculty. I just wanted to also add, before I close, that I'm honored to serve on behalf of the faculty on the Presidential Search Committee. I have completed my HR training, and I'm looking forward to seeing the pool of applicants that want this position, and just seeing what, who's applied. So I'm looking forward to that process, and I think we're all anxious to find out what kind of candidate pool we have. So, that concludes my report. That's all I have.
We will have a report later in the meeting about the search committee that Dr. Cook, who's chairing the search committee, will give. Questions for Dr. Harvey, or comments? Trustee Lawson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. What are the trainings are you guys experiencing in the presidential search?
So, so far, we did standard HR for all of the, all employee searches, hiring searches at this point, is we have a hiring process, one that's internal, and it goes through all the rules and everything, all the processes. And then we did, I always say this wrong, it's implicit bias?
Unconscious.
Unconscious. See, I said that, and someone corrected me earlier today, so I was right. Unconscious bias training, and they said, oh, you mean implicit? And I was like, oh, I thought I was wrong. So, thank you. Okay, so there's a whole, it's an external vendor that provides that for us, and it's a whole, it's pretty extensive, and it took me a while. And so, I went through that, too, and there's questions, and you have to complete some questions at the end and throughout, and then you get a certificate of completion. But we went through both of those.
Great. If I could get a copy of those, I'd like them.
My recollection is that part of the reason we selected AGB to do it was because they had that unconscious bias, I thought it was implicit, too, unconscious bias training that they touted as part of their RFP response, so... They did not provide that. We went out and found another vendor to do that for us. Yeah, but they encouraged us to find one.
Great, okay. Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cook?
I was intrigued, Dr. Harvey, on your comments about the international studies. In the President's report, you have read that report, that our college ranked 17th in the nation, and I believe, if my numbers are right, there are about 1,200, just under 1,200 community colleges. But we ranked 17th in the number of students we have in international studies abroad, and we ranked 15th in short-term studies abroad. So, I found your enthusiasm very interesting, because there are so many good things, and I hate to just mention that one item in the President's report, and I'll speak to that more later, but I found your enthusiasm as, got high as mine, because I thought that was pretty impressive.
Now, is that ranking students coming here, or is it, are students going other places?
It's abroad.
Well, it could be, is it both ways?
Well, so abroad is our students who travel elsewhere, but I think both reflect the globalized education that we provide.
There are a lot of great international opportunities for our students, and also for our faculty to lead trips with students, too. So I think that's what you read about, which is excellent. But the services that we're actually providing here, too, having a resource placed to send students, and the help that they can give to our international and immigrant student population is great, and I think that's critical. And I know back when we were talking about DACA and different things like that, I know that we have, we have a large population, of the population in Kansas that are the Dreamers, we have the largest percentage probably of any, I think of any of the higher eds, I bet. So, I remember the numbers at the time were a little fuzzy, because it's hard to always know who's a Dreamer, but we had a large percentage of those that come here. So that's, it's an important population, and I think community college is the best place to serve that group.
Yeah, I was just going to add, I know the State Department, United States State Department looks very favorably upon our college. I think we're one of the highest recipients of Gilman, is it Gilman scholarships? And that's a credit to the people who work in that office, as well as the faculty and staff, who really, as you say, coach up our students. So, we're very highly regarded in that area.
And I'm always glad when they can tell us, like, how can you best help students? Because sometimes, we're the first contact with them, and they come to us, and we find out a problem that they have. And for us to know where we can send them, what resources are available, or even what, you know, how to avoid putting them in a bad situation, it's really important information.
Mr. Chair.
Trustee Cross, I'm going back to you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Professor, what does, I think we've struggled with this term in my time at the Board, although I think we've done a decent job in terms of shared governance, but what does that mean to you, and do we do a decent job addressing it?
Well, that is a loaded question. So, we just talked about this last night at the foundation, because there were foundation board members that were asking, what does the shared governance mean? And the way that I described it last night was to say that a lot of it has to do with sharing the work and the process of decision-making. And so, when you have an issue, a problem that you need to solve, going to the people who are directly impacted, involving all of those folks in coming up with solutions to that problem. And then, of course, it always makes its way to, as recommendation, and of course, you guys get recommendations all the time from the administration, based on their experience. And so, the idea is that everyone, staff, students, faculty, people along the way that are involved, they're impacted by those decisions, that they're involved in that making solutions, improving things, and that whole process of making decisions. So, that really is what shared governance is. It's like that shared responsibility, and I also say, you know, shared work of doing all of that. As far as where we're at on that, you know, we're working on it right now. So, we have a couple of task forces that have been working very hard. Right now, we're putting structures in place, and outlining how the process should work. Really, it's only going to work as well as we culturally, you know, use it, accept it, embrace this idea of involving people in decision-making. So we can put stuff on paper, we can say this is how decisions are made, but unless we fully commit to carrying out that, those processes, I would say that's when we really have good shared governance. And so, we're working on it, we're working on outlining some of that, and time will tell how good we, you know, how well we follow our plan.
Trustee Lawson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had some questions about the diversity, equity, inclusion study. I'm really proud of you guys for working so hard to get that RFP, and you mentioned it will be proceeding soon. Will the trustee board be included in that study?
I'm not the best person to answer that question, because I'm, you know, that is spearheaded by, I think, Ty Edwards, Tanya Hughes, there are certain faculty that have really propelled that effort forward. I would say I've been a cheerleader in the background, and I know that there was, they did a whole RFP process and got a vendor to do this for us, so perhaps you can shed more light.
The entire, the vendor that we chose will actually work with the entire constituency of the college. So, the Board will be included in some of those conversations, as well as some surveys of the community outside of the college, those businesses that are connected to us through advisory boards, the entire faculty, student groups. So it will be a broad, wide-ranging effort to gather information as we look at the audit of our diversity and what we do on this campus.
And what's the goal in getting this information?
I think it's a needs assessment, because really, what we want to find out is where are we, and what do we need? You know, what do we need to do to improve things? Where are there gaps, holes, where are the concerns? And there's going to need, they need some strategic data collection that intentionally is looking for those needs, and that's the process. And then, once we figure out what we need, I assume this firm will help make some recommendations for...
Strategic planning in the future.
For how we could address some of our concerns and needs. And so, we're interested in, you know, everyone who works here, we're interested in our students, we're interested in a complete picture here for DEI.
What's the name of the company?
MGT Consulting, out of Tallahassee, Florida.
MGT, out of Tallahassee, okay. And Dr. Harvey, I just had a question. I haven't heard any updates on the listening sessions that happened with the Employee Engagement Survey. I know they were looking at the distrust in senior leadership, so I just kind of wanted to find out what's going on with that, if you know.
I haven't heard anything since the last time we worked, talked about it. I haven't heard anything since then, so...
And when was that?
I'd have to go back and...
You know, unfortunately, Karen, who's leading that initiative, isn't here tonight, but I tell you what we can do, we can provide a report and a status at the next, give a status report at the next meeting.
It's been a while, so I'm not sure. Anyone else?
Trustee, Smith Everett, go for it.
I just wanted to clarify what a Gilman scholarship is.
Yeah, the State Department has, I guess, several programs, and I can't give you the specifics about that. All I know, it's a big deal. And, very sophisticated response, I know. But it's great for the college.
Thank you.
And, Farrell, can you?
I was the study run for MAAR for several years, and it's a major student scholarship to the State Department for YOQ, Pell Grant eligible, for we've been awarded awards in areas there for how many of our students received.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Farrell.
It's a big deal.
It is.
That's great. Thank you.
Dr. Harvey, I would be interested in if you would share with us the KNEA legislative program as it relates to community colleges or higher ed.
Well, so they have, they have four different items in their legislative agenda. And it's sort of like, here's how we view taxation. And so, for example, the thing that stuck out to me was their view of how food is taxed. And I was thinking, you know, we talk about the food insecurity of our students being such a critical thing. And so, how the state decides to handle the cost of food related to taxes when you're talking about lower-income individuals, that going forward is an issue, for example, that would be, you know, KNEA would support doing something to offset the cost of food for poorer individuals, so, and related to tax. So then, there's also a section on education and just funding of education, public education. There's also a legislative agenda item on, you know, support for educators. So any items that might, for example, they've been trying to get due process for K through 12 teachers back. We have that still. So they would be very interested in supporting due process rights for any public teachers. And then, of course, there's also some just about supporting Kansans, so like a bright future for Kansans, and so things that are going to make students, you know, if you think about kids and their families, more supported so that they can attend school and be more successful. So it's kind of broad, but then it's got a lot of detail. I could share that with you, if you're interested.
I just think you're going to talk about it and support it as part of the local affiliate that'd be helpful for us to see it, and for Dr. Harvey to see it, who may already have seen it, but...
Sure, I'm sure you probably have seen, I don't know, but it is what KNEA asks their, if they have endorsed legislators when they were elected, they are sharing that with them and saying, you know, we back you because we know you support us, and here's the priorities for us. The other thing is that they have resolutions, they have a big book of resolutions, and we can put forward, at our regional assembly, a representative assembly, we have, this happens in April every year, and we can put forward new resolutions of like, we did one for concealed carry guns on campuses. We added that to KNEA, asking for local control of that. The reason we went for local control was because there are more rural community colleges that might have a different opinion about it than our institution. But we put something in there so that if there is legislation that might impact that, KNEA can say, our membership supported this view, and that's how they're going to lobby. And so, there is this whole book, and so there are a couple of things that I'm interested in possibly adding to that, so that if they do appear in the legislature, because sometimes you don't know what's going to pop up, if they do appear, that KNEA can take a position one way or another, because their membership, the delegates in their membership statewide have said, this is what we want you to support. That's how it works.
I just assumed there's probably a front and back sheet that they, of the general legislative program, and if there is such a thing, I don't think anybody up here probably wants the big book. I'm sure you could get into it if we wanted the big book.
Yeah, Chairman, no.
But just a summary, so...
The summary one, I'd be happy to share that with all of you, so you have an idea.
Advocating where we might agree with it, and be helpful.
I just sent you a link, Mr. Chair, to share with the Board, the link to the PDF.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I don't see any more questions. Thank you very much. Good luck starting Tuesday.
Thank you.
The next thing we'll move to is the Johnson County Education Research Triangle. Trustee Cross.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Treasurer's report can be found in your packet. The board packet contains the treasurer's report.
This is the Jaser.
Oh.
We're not the treasurer yet.
Excuse me, I was talking to Dr. McLeod, and I was not paying attention. We haven't met, Mr. Chair. We meet in, later this year.
Okay.
There'll be many more reports in which I say, we meet, I think, again, in October.
In a quarter or so, right.
Now, thank you.
Okay. Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Trustee Ingram.
Yes, and I have changed my...
Yes, and I have changed my position over here, so Trustee Snyder, Trustee Snyder?
Yes.
You need to pay attention to Trustee Cross.
That's outrageous.
I apologize, I couldn't resist.
L-E-E-C-R-O-S-S.
It would be very easy to say that the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees does not meet until March and leave it at that. However, we've already heard some discussion about the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, so I'm not going to allow that to happen. We do have an executive committee meeting that is held the very last week of the month. We have a phone call, conference call between all five of the officers, so we will have it at the end of the month. I don't have anything to report on that, and actually, I was to have met with our executive director, Heather Morgan, last Friday, but due to the weather, we did not meet. So, based upon that, I do have a little bit of information that she has asked me to share regarding the Kansas Leadership Institute, which is a program through the KACC. We had two of our staff participate in that, Farrell Hoy Janab was one of those, as well as Leslie Dykstra, that took place last week at Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and Senator, Senator Molly Baumgartner from JCCC was one of the people who has served on the panel, so that sounded like it was a great event. As activity in the legislature is beginning, our executive director, Heather Morgan, will be prepared and ready to move forward on behalf of all Kansas community colleges. So thank you for your, Dr. Subtich, the expression of how the process works, but that is exactly how the process works when we move legislation forward, so you will be hearing from me, I think, on a more routine basis than perhaps before, based upon the involvement that we now have at Johnson County Community College. So I will end with that. We will be having some legislative phone calls on Fridays throughout the legislative session as well, so there will be a lot more to report.
And the American, or Association of Community College Trustees will have its legislative summit in DC in February, and I believe Trustee Smith Everett and I are signed up to attend that along with Dr. Subtich. So that will be before our next meeting, and we'll, we may have a report thereafter. Foundation report, Trustee Ingram again.
Yes, the foundation is off to a busy start. The Board of Directors met last night, and we want to thank Trustee Smith Everett for stopping by the meeting so that she could be introduced to the members of the foundation. Earlier today, a selection committee comprised of two trustees, JCCC's president, the foundation's board president, a foundation member, and true 2020 Some Enchanted Evening event leadership also met to begin the process of choosing a 2020 Johnson County of the Year. Candidates could be nominated by any foundation member. The intent of this award is to recognize someone who has made significant contributions to the Johnson County community and JCCC and will be presented at Some Enchanted Evening this coming November. The foundation is still accepting nominations for new board members. The Board Development Committee will meet January 29th to review potential candidates for the 2020-2021 board slate. This process will conclude with a vote on the slate at the foundation's April board meeting. The foundation investment committee will hold its quarterly meeting on February 4th to review the quarterly report of managed investments. Dr. Harvey already mentioned, but I wanted to share that reports were given by the Faculty Association President, Melanie Harvey, as well as Student Senate President, Anne Keat Prisai, both gave examples of the foundation's importance to students, staff, and ultimately how they assist in meeting student success, and it was a really great meeting, and we really appreciated that information. So I don't know if Melanie still, thank you very much for that, it was excellent. We also heard a report from Debbie Rulo from Continuing Ed. She provided information on a pilot program with Cultivate, Inc., and the Johnson County Corrections Adult Residential Center. Cultivate, Inc. and JCCC are providing continuing education opportunities such as certificates in food handling, OSHA safety, and welding in a pilot program that's supported by grant monies through the foundation this year. So we look forward to hearing more about that program. And finally, the foundation will be hosting a foundation member's social beginning at 4:30 PM on Thursday, February 27th. That will include a tour of the new Student Welcome Center and new Student Basic Needs Center. As foundation members, all trustees are invited to attend, and that includes that report.
Trustee Cross, you have a question?
When you get a chance, I'd like to take another crack at the report I was supposed to give. I appreciate Trustee Ingram challenging me. I overlooked it on the board packet, I apologize, so if I could have another crack, I'd appreciate.
Kansas, or the Johnson County Community-
JASR, yes.
Education Research Triangle, Trustee Cross.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. JASR did not meet, it's true. We meet next Monday, April 20th, 2020, at K-State Oletha. We have had, actually, Mayor Peggy Dunn sent, she's our new chair, she sent out a report of our distributions for last year, it was up 1.2% from 2018, and in December last year, since we last met, the Kansas City Business Journal actually did a article about how in 10 years, the Johnson County Research Triangle is on its way to a $1.16 billion impact on the Kansas City economy, and this really was a fascinating cooperative effort among many different entities to develop a tax to support our local education triangle. So again, we'll meet in April, there really wasn't much to report, I overlooked it, I apologize, and thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to-
Not a problem.
That concludes my report.
Trustee Lawson is handing me a note, there's somebody in the audience, is Christopher Reeves in the audience, that indicated he had signed up for the open forum, but I did not get the notice. Mr. Reeves, this is unusual, but if you want to have the opportunity to, to speak, this would be the time before we get into committee reports.
I can be very brief.
We'll need to have you to the podium, please, so, state your name and address, please.
My name is Christopher Reeves, 5726 Findley Street, Shawnee, Kansas. I'm coming here on a very brief matter, which is just to correct a few minor things, because I think corrections are important. I was unaware until after the last board meeting that I was invoked by name in regards to certain information, and I want to correct that. There was an implication that at a meeting of the union party, that I had discussions that were out of order. This was within three weeks of my spouse passing away, and most of the conversations were actually farewells on that and thank yous for those notes. There weren't a lot of rallies around positions. Second, there was an implication in regards to my involvement within the election of campaigns. I will say this year was trying one for me, in that not only was there changes in my family on that front, but the institutionalization of my oldest son due to his disabilities. It's very rare for men to admit how things impact them, and depression is a very hard one to admit. And for people with, with TBI, which is traumatic brain injury, we don't always react to drugs the same way that others do. So between September and December, I spent about eight weeks hospitalized, back and forth, so I wasn't involved in much of anything, and I would appreciate staying out of that. Finally, I want to say this because I feel that this is incredibly important. I am someone who has worked in the press for quite some time. I've worked for the organization that I'm with in one form or another for 14 years now, and I've worked with other organizations as well. People love us or they hate us, it's just how it goes, and we know how it goes. But we don't go out to attack people or take people down, we write the stories that we know people will read. If we're somewhere where the story is what people will read, that's what we write, it's what we're paid to do. Doesn't always make people happy. We don't attack institutions or organizations or make specific efforts. I've written more about city councils, state governments, and Chris Kobach than I have any educational institution. No one ever yelped when we ran stories about conversations regarding elected officials or police officers, superintendents, or others. We're always going to make people unhappy, it's just how it goes. I owe no ill will to this institution. I look forward to the best in this institution. My son, my youngest son attends here, and I hope that moving forward, we can advance this institution together to ask questions and be okay with it. It's okay to disagree without being disagreeable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I apologize if there was a mix-up in getting you during the open forum session, appreciate your sticking around to have that opportunity. We'll move on to committee reports, the first one is Human Resources, Trustee Ingram.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask a question about the reports? They're not in, ever in the public packet, but they're so informative. Is there any way that you might consider including those reports in the actual public document at some point?
Well, the reports will be included in the minutes of the meeting as summarized, but we can certainly look into that. One of the retreat topics I want to address is what is included in the packets, we had some information in December about security issues and concerns about, including too much detail, especially on financial matters in the packet. I think we have an issue in how much staff time is required to put things in the packet, but that can be one of the topics, if you'll remember it, I'll try to remember it as well.
Where would you like me to turn that in?
Well, just when we have a retreat about board procedures and what we can do better about-
Oh, the retreat, okay.
Thank you. Trustee Ingram?
Yes, Human Resources did not meet this month. We will hold our first meeting of 2020 on Friday morning, February 9th, oh, excuse me, 7th, at 8:00 AM in GEB 141.
Okay, thank you. Next item is learning quality, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our learning quality did meet on January 6th. Trustee Cross, Trustee Smith Everett, myself are on that committee, along with a plethora of staff and faculty. We had an efficient meeting. The first item, Dr. Weber, gave an update on some policy changes that had to deal with registration assessment, auditing, and scheduling, and tuition, and financial aid. Excuse me, the, this whole packet, by the way, is on pages 4 through 13 of your, of your board book. Much of those changes have to do with us going from 16 weeks to 15 weeks, and so there was some editing to policies in regard to that. You have all of those policy changes in front of you. I would like to make the motion that it is the recommendation of the Learning Quality Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification to the following policies. Assessment Policy 311.02, scheduling of courses and add drop policy 311.03, enrollment status and course load policy 311.04, tuition refund policy 312.01, and financial aid policy 313.01, as shown in the board packet, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by Trustee Cross to adopt the recommendation found on page 5 of the agenda. Is there any discussion? Trustee Smith Everett?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I was in the Learning Quality Committee, and when I first read the add drop policy, I wasn't thinking of it the same way I was when I read the packet, when the board packet came out, and it really occurred to me, if you look at that, that policy, it basically says that the college reserves the right to cancel, combine, change the day, time, or location of any course without obligation prior notice, or prior notice, and that refunds will be granted immediately. So what occurred to me, and the question I have, is if we're thinking of students that are first-generation students, or students that are new to college, this can be something that they were expecting a class on a certain day at a certain time, and when that change happens, it can be very disruptive, particularly if they're working multiple jobs, if they've got childcare, and so I wondered what things we have in place to contact them and to make a personal touch and walk them through the process of adjusting and getting a different schedule.
We have a number of approaches that we use for that. The first is, in the course of our scheduling, we try to not move more than 10% of our schedule at this point because of using historical schedules to see what has made and what does not make. If and when it is time for us to cancel a class, whether that be for low enrollment, oftentimes it is either low enrollment, lack of an instructor, because we have an adjunct who has a life circumstance or a change who cannot fulfill their contract, and so we do not have an individual to take that course, or we have a situation where a full-time faculty member occasionally has a major family issue or upheaval within a week of us beginning a semester, and we have to move a course or reassign that individual because of medical or family issues. In those cases, we actually have a multi-pronged system that starts with the dean and the chair, who then will reach out to the students in the affected course and work with those students to attempt to work down a chain of responsibility of what can we do to accommodate that student need? Are there other options for this same course at a time that would work for the student? And then we try to work to get them moved into another course, that's always option one. Option two is to look at whether or not there's an opportunity for that student to take a separate class that fulfills the same requirement, when the issue of the course itself for each, for the student, which is kind of an individual piece, depending on the student's situation, it can be that the content itself is not important, but the overall skill set, and so we can then, in such cases, as specific literature courses. For transfer, a lot of times, it is an upper division literature course, it's not necessary that it be, in particular, African-American-led or women's-led, and so we can sometimes find another course that a student can, can move into. If that fails, then we start to look at course substitutions for the student, and we start to work through if it is possible for another course to substitute for that content on the student's behalf. If we make it through all of those pieces, and we cannot find a suitable place for a student based on either the need for transfer, or because we cannot accommodate the time period in which they need to meet for the class, then we start to look at how can we move the student's degree plan around to maybe accommodate a course that they had planned to take in a later semester, so long as we do not upset the chain for prerequisites for that student. And so all of that is available to be worked through. We start by calling the student personally and trying to contact them and getting them to work either with the dean and the chair, or getting them to come in or online, work with counseling and advising under Dr. Weber's branch, to work with someone directly to try and find a solution. We often have a couple of hundred students who are in this situation pretty much every semester, because in over 10,000 sections that we offer every semester, we always have a few hiccups, issues, courses that are much lower in enrollment than we would be able to allow to run, a course with a cap of 27 that maybe only has three students signed up for it, and so we then try to move those students into a section where we can fill more seats and be more efficient with the taxpayers' funds. Really, for us, it's about trying to make sure we meet the student's need where they are, to help them get what they need in the timeframe that they needed in. It can be complex. We try to never cancel anything after about five days before a semester. We do occasionally have things crop up, particularly those are affected by medical issues affecting an instructor, in which case, we will try to move more expeditiously through kind of our chain of operations to find them somewhere to go.
Dr. McLeod?
Can I answer your question?
I did have one follow-up.
Sure, certainly.
So do you feel like your success rate of being able to make those accommodations and get those couple hundred students is fairly high?
It has been very high for the students who have remained in contact.
We will occasionally try multiple times to call a student and not be able to get a response, and so we do have a number of folks who never return our calls and never come back to campus for us to work with them, and so we have no way of then. We try to go back every couple of semesters and track to see if they did re-enroll somewhere, but sometimes folks really do kind of disappear into the ether, and we can't track where they went.
I was going to say, maybe, maybe a text option, sometimes-
Yeah.
They won't answer phone calls, but they'll text you back, I don't know, if we can-
Yeah.
-look into something like that for students. I just wondered how many that affected that maybe we were not successful in accommodating for them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Trustee Lawson?
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Dr. McLeod. So I have other, some more questions on that line, and also the same concern with this policy. You mentioned that when you reach out, is it email, text, phone, and mail?
It is email and phone call primarily. We do not usually use US mail, it's a little too slow. If the course cancels, and we only have about five days, it's a very short window if we try to US mail a student, so we try more direct contact through phone calls or, and email. We try to use the email that we have on file, primarily we try to use student email, because we know it to be the most reliable, but if we have other emails on file or- we have other emails on file, or connected emails that students have attached to their student emails, we try to make sure we contact them there as well.
And those students are aware of that JCC email?
It is part of their orientation package when they do the online orientation, when they submit their application.
Do we know how many students that come in that are not first time, that go through that orientation? Because if we send them to an email account that they don't have access to, then we might be talking to a wall here.
Yeah, so degree, all degree-seeking students, first time, are required to do orientation. Obviously, if they're showing up for the first semester and they've not done it yet, that's kind of a catch-22, but it's, our catch is prior to second semester of enrollment. So we work really hard to get them through orientation, but we don't really have any carrot or stick to get somebody to attend an orientation either online or face-to-face. It's a requirement, but there's nothing between enrollment and attending class that we can incentivize positively or negatively.
So the JCC email, that's automatic when they enroll?
It's issued, yeah.
Is that forwarding, where there's a second alternative email, so in case someone is not aware, or they're busy?
Well, so when a student applies, and they provide their personal email address, an email is sent to their personal email address noting them, notifying them of their JCC StuMail account, and for a variety of reasons, we tell them that future communications with the college will be through their StuMail account. But we also have a committee, cross-departmental, working on student communication strategies right now to determine if and when times for things like text or email would be more beneficial.
I'd be interested in looking at the drip campaign for being able to reach out to some of those students who don't know that they have a JCC account.
Our marketing communications teams made tremendous strides in helping us figure out email click-through rates. We know when we send emails, if students click on them and open them or not. That's kind of a spooky thing to me, that we're able to do that, but we can.
And from our standpoint, and on the academic side of things, a part of why we focus primarily on using the internal email account is because of the security protocols, and it keeps us within the framework of federal FERPA, so that we are not subject to claims of FERPA violation, since we do not know that an individual's personal email address is not open or connected to other people's addresses. We have to be very, very careful to maintain our confidentiality of student records, and so we try to keep students utilizing our internal system, which we have some controls over, which allows us to maintain that confidentiality at a higher rate, and maintain our FERPA compliance at the federal level.
Yeah. I think if we're going to use the email of that account, we just need to make sure that students know that, and I think you're aware of it. The other two questions I have is, is there a report on the student retention for those dropped classes, to make sure students are not lost in this process? I can't imagine.
There is not a tracking report currently in place that we use for those classes, which is one of the reasons why we have designed kind of a more hands-on approach to try and keep them engaged with us, either both through the department and through the use of the counseling and advising staff and the success advocates. It allows us to try to stay more connected to those students, and to provide them with a touchstone, so that we can contact more than once if they do not follow up on the material or information.
So is there a way to kind of look at how many students are retained during this process, to know that it's successful?
Right now, it's possible. We just haven't built it, yeah.
Can I look into that?
We could work with IR to, I mean, yeah, we put that on a list. We'd have to see where and how it's prioritized, but I think we could work with IR. That'd be an academic request, but doable.
Well, it sounds like part of what you're already doing in the student communication aspect, is to look at that.
Yes, yeah.
So that is a yes on the report?
It is a yes on the fact that we believe it would be possible for us to build it. We'll have to put it on our priority list for things that we work with through IR.
I don't think it's appropriate for us to ask for commitments from staff to do a certain thing, but I think what they've said is that will be part of their review of this policy, to find out what is happening to those students, more than the personal touches that they're already doing. I mean, you have an idea, based on what you've been doing over the last several years. You can't click a button and say it's this many students versus that many students.
Okay, so, Mr. Chair, then how do I get information about this report, if I'm not allowed to ask staff for reports?
Well, you're not allowed to ask, tell them what kind of report to do, but there will be reports going forward with respect to how we are tracking those students, particularly with the change in this policy. As we always do, we will continue to review that, to determine whether it's done, whether it's done on a, clicking a computer data screen, or it's done through the professional report of the Director of Student Success, Vice President for Student Success, and the Vice President for Academic Affairs, and their staff is yet to be determined.
Okay, so I would like to know how many students are retained during this process, so how would we go about doing that?
I think we heard tonight that out of the couple hundred every year, a few of them get, disappear, and get lost in the ether. So I don't think they're prepared tonight to ask to give you a specific number, or whether they can pull that specific number.
So I can't get information?
Well, no, trustee Lawson, you can get information, but there is a process by which staff goes through reviews, and goes through evaluations of our processes, and this is part of that. And the information is not available tonight.
I wasn't asking about tonight, so I understand that.
If I can here, what staff will do, they'll sit back, they'll talk about the nature of this issue. We'll assess the feasibility with IR, and to see exactly what priority this should be given, and that's what we'll do. That's what we do with everything on that type of thing. It's a team effort, and we have to put it in perspective of all the other things that IR has asked for, along with all the KBR requests, the KCCT requests, and just the day-to-day stuff that IR has to do. So we'll definitely look at it, because it is a critical issue. And so that's what staff does, and that's what we'll do.
This is my first opportunity to get back to my pet peeve, which is, using acronyms, FERPA is a federal law requiring privacy with respect to student information.
The Federal Educational Rights to Privacy Act.
Federal Educational Rights to Privacy Act, which is why we don't like using their personal email, which is why we assign them a student email, which is why we send to their personal email that you are now on a student email. So that, you know, I'll continue to.
Yes.
Act irritated, I'm not really. All right. So you have a question? Call the question, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Point of order, then? I hadn't had a chance to talk about the policy that I have a concern about.
Are we, is it the one that we have a motion on?
Yep, the 311.03 that was open for discussion.
Okay.
Still ahead of the floor. So what in the old policy that is crossed out with the word obligation started the discussion to update this?
311.03 is on page five and six.
Where it said.
The change is, if you used to read "without obligation," and we could cancel a class now, it reads "without prior notice," and refunds will be granted in accordance with tuition refund policy 312.01.
Right, so what in this old policy started this conversation to update this?
Some of what you see here, as some of these things were modified, was the opportunity to link some policies to one another. So as obligation was removed, cleaner language was added that includes prior notice and refunds, and will be granted in accordance with the tuition refund policy. So now people, when this is dropped, they now know which policy to go to, to determine what the tuition refund policy is. If we would have left the old language, it just said, the college would have been dropped without obligation, and students wouldn't have known what their tuition refund options were. So this is to provide cleaner language, and allowing students to know where to go for student refund policies. This is actually to provide more transparency and clarity.
And the tuition refund policy 312.01, modifications of that are found on page seven and eight of the packet, and this is part of our ongoing review of policies that we do continually. And Kelsey Nazar, our in-house counsel in the back, and it's probably one of the bane of her existence to continually update policy language, so that it's clearer for students and for the administration and faculty to actually administer. You have further questions, trustee Lawson?
Yes, if we can separate these policies and vote them individually.
Is there a particular one you want to separate, as opposed to considering them all separately, since we have one, two, three, four?
The 311.03, but I don't know if any other trustees need to be able, or want to have them separated. If not, that's the only one that I'm looking at.
Is it your intention to vote against the modification of 311.03? Can we just vote on this, and you can note your opposition to that one? Or do you want to vote it on separately?
I'd like to vote it separately.
Does the maker of the motion and the secondor agree that we would remove from the motion the course-add-drop policy 311.03?
We will pull 311.03 out of that motion, and the motion would include the remaining policies, to discuss the other one separately.
Second.
Yeah. I'm going to assume that's a friendly amendment, and.
So I would call for the question on all of the policies, with the exception of 311.03.
Okay. Everybody understand the motion? All in favor of, I'm going to read it, all in favor of revisions to policies 311.02, 311.04, 312.01, and 313.01, signified by saying yes.
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 That is unanimous.
I will then make a motion to put it back on the floor, Mr. Chair, that we approve policy 311.03, the add-drop policy.
Second.
Been moved by trustee Cook and seconded by trustee Snyder to approve the modifications to policy 311.03. Is there any further discussion on that? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no?
No.
That passes six to one, with trustee Lawson voting nay. Next item, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Girbeshan Singh gave an update on an affiliation agreement. It's an agreement that we've had in the past with Village Shalom. You'll find that agreement in the consent agenda. Nothing has been changed. It's a clinical affiliation agreement. Theresa McChesney of the Affairs Committee also gave an update on several curriculum changes that had to do with terminology, and there's a plethora of them. Again, all of these are vetted through Educational Affairs and approved through that process. I guess a simple example would be that there were a number of programs, for example, that were titled Speech and Debate, and now that's been changed to Communication Studies. And so we had to go through the process of changing those courses to make sure it reflected such. And so they are all found in the consent agenda, and I have no further report from learning quality. I would defer to trustee Snyder and trustee Smith Everett, if they have any additional comments about learning quality.
I do not. I'm not on the committee this year. I would just note.
I'm sorry.
All my reports last year were much briefer than yours.
I apologize, trustee Cross.
I commend the chair for his timely and committee report that was better than my early one. Thank you.
Trustee Smith Everett, any?
No.
All right. Moving on to the Management Committee, Dr. Cook.
The Management Committee met on January 8th with trustee Smith Everett and trustee Snyder, and again, a large staff of people. Dr. Mary Wizgerda, Dean of Mathematics and Science, presented information about plans for science lab renovations. She listed pedagogy, safety, and inclusivity as the top three reasons for the remodel. It's interesting that we've talked about our science labs for some time, and the importance to update them. That is going to be included in our whole budget discussion as we move forward. The other interesting thing about our science labs is that they are so highly connected with our nursing programs, and as we know, with our outstanding nursing program, and the need for, I mentioned earlier during Mr. Carter's report, that healthcare is a need across the state as it relates to rural Kansas. And so that will get our attention as we move forward on the need for science labs. Tom Clayton, Director of Insurance and Risk Management, reported on the college's insurance program and covered the Insurance Policy Digest for fiscal year 2020, and we have a number of policies that we reviewed. Rachel Leers, Associate Vice President of Financial Services, CFO, presented follow-up information on the Series 2019 bonding refinancing, which was approved by the Board at the October 31st, 2019 meeting. She reviewed how the $5 per credit hour debt reduction fee has not been increased since 2004, noted that it is used to make principal and interest payments on the $15 million in outstanding revenue bond debt, Series 212, 215, and Series 2019. She noted that all proceeds from the recent Series 2019 refunding revenue bonds were used to redoom the Series 2011 refunding revenue bonds. Total cost of issuance on the Series 2019 refunding revenue bonds were approximately $71,650. The college's cash reserves and debt management policies informed the refinancing decision, as well as the annual budget process, allowing the use of long-term debt financing techniques to help ensure reserve levels, providing for cash flow and contingency purposes, and that may also be used to address the strategic priorities identified by the college. Furthermore, she noted that it is the administration's expectation that the college's reserve funds will contribute significantly to facilities, projects beyond fiscal year 2021. Two trustees raised an issue with that, as we had some open forum discussion on that strategy. And so I think, Mr. Chair, it would be appropriate to stop at this time and see if there are any questions about follow-up to how we retire the debt.
Are there any questions from trustees?
About the committee itself, or?
No, that topic on the debt of the cash reserves and paying off the, what I just reported on.
Doesn't look like it. Go ahead.
I was just going to know, I don't have a question, just want to thank Rachel and the presentation that was brought to that committee, which I think has been subsequently sent to the whole board, I thought was really helpful to kind of refresh everyone's memory for what the decision points were leading to that, so I just thought that was helpful.
Mr. Chair, I did have a question. What is the actual cash reserve balance right now?
Well.
It's in the board packet.
What page?
We'll do the treasurer's report, but Dr. Weber, you?
I wouldn't, I couldn't speak to today's actual, the best we could do is pull up and look.
Page 46.
Thank you.
Will provide an overview of the cash reserves, not just for the general and PTE funds, but all funds as well. And so the key number here that's often used for, I guess for comparison, or for utility, is the December number, because that's at the very lowest, the lowest point for the reserves.
So I'm sorry, what is the number, then?
On page 46, the number of prior-year unencumbered balance, or the unencumbered balance as of November 30th would have been $68,366,082.
Okay. Oh, it's the third column right there, okay.
Yeah.
And what's the percentage of that?
What's the percentage of that? That is what?
We have a 25% policy, so I just wanted to know, what is the percentage of this?
So the policy says that the cash reserve would never fall below 25% of the annual budget. So, as was just said, in December is when we're at our lowest point. So the goal is that in December, when the college is at its lowest point, it would not be below 25% of the annual general fund budget.
Okay, so it's Cash Reserve Policy 210.07. It's the policy of the objective of the college to maintain a minimum general fund reserve balance throughout the year of the 25% of the general fund budget to be used for cash flow purposes and to mitigate risks such as revenue shortfalls or unanticipated expenditures. The balance larger than this minimum policy calculated amount may be maintained periodically. So I just wanted to know, what is the percentage of 68 million?
Well, the percentage of 68 million over an operating budget of approximately 58 million would be a math problem that would tell me it's a little under 40, a little under 50%.
158 million.
158 million.
No, it's not 150%.
No, 150 million operating budget, a 68 million unencumbered balance as of November 30th would be somewhere between 40 and 50%. It's important for everybody here, and all the trustees, all of them here except trustee Smith Everett, discussed and voted on a policy that said we will rely on the number as of 12/31 of each calendar year, because that's the low point. And so during most of the rest of the year, our reserves are going to be greater than the 25% minimum, but they will be viewed and reviewed as of December 31, and that's what we're doing. So picking out numbers, specific times of the year, isn't really helpful, because it doesn't reflect what the policy is in the board, that the board has adopted. So I'm not sure what you're trying to get to. It's a number that's reported in the treasurer's report every month, an unencumbered balance. So it's out there publicly every month, and we review it in a graph every month, and it's available by our policy, and we can look at it at year-end, which we will have next month, when we have the December 31st monthly finance report.
I think I just wanted to know what the cash reserve policy, what the. I think I just wanted to know what the cash reserve policy, the cash reserve amount and the percentage of it, and for how long have we maintained this high reserves that are over our policy?
Well, you can see in the chart on page 46, it changes month against month. Some months we spend more money than we collect, so it dips. That's what, for example, the low point of December reflects. Also, in the presentation this month, it was pointed out that the reserves also support some other things like capital projects moving ahead. We are planning to do capital projects such as the science labs without taking on debt. So we cannot do that unless we have cash reserves beyond the 25% at any given low point. We talked about how the last time the economy, we experienced a recession and enrollment went up, we increased tuition by $14 over three years. If we don't have cash reserves to mitigate that, we would anticipate having to increase tuition to be able to do that. We also have strategic initiatives for it to fund. So the intent isn't towards to be at 25% at all times, it's to be at greater than 25% and also to provide us positioning for strategic initiatives, future struggles with preventing tuition increases, as well as preventing future debt.
So what do I do with this policy? Because it says that we have to have a minimum of 25% and then to not go larger than periodical...
So we're within policy.
I'm sorry. I was just...
25% is the minimum. I think currently we're around 40%.
Yeah, just under 40%.
Right.
Okay. So I just asked the question, which I haven't heard yet, is how long have we been over 25%?
I think it would be good for perhaps to present a history of where the reserve was in 2013, and then you could see the growth of that reserve since that time, give you some perspective, and how that reserve was used prior to 2013 as well.
Right. Mr. Chair. Well, I'm trying to figure out how we got all the way to this from a refinancing of revenue bonds.
Right, right. Off topic.
But the chart, the unencumbered balance is in every month's Treasury's report. Any trustee that wants to see it or any member of the public can go back and read each month's report and write those numbers down. So it's available out there, and our policy is a minimum policy. It's not a maximum policy, and we do it as of 12/31, a number we don't have today, but we know is lower at the low point of the year. So I'm ready to move on to something else if the rest of the board is.
I also think, Mr. Chair, Trustee Cross had a point.
I was just going to point out, I mean, that information would have been available in the previous board packets and certainly the Treasury's reports. Have been here in 13. We had quite a bit of, I came on in 13, we had quite a bit of political scrutiny, I think, for our cash reserves over the years, and I have deemed it a prudent measure that this college has taken for a number of the reasons Trustee Lawson just read. I'm perfectly fine with it. It's got my confidence. It's a useful tool that we've employed to manage our revenues, both Mr. Chairs. So I just wanted to comment on that and say that it's out there. We discuss it every month. It's not like this is a new thing.
I would just say, Mr. Chair, that a couple of things. I believe that the report we received to support Trustee Snyder on the $5 credit power and the debt reduction fee and that whole strategy we've used over the years is very solid. Rachel Leers gave a great report on that. I have a lot of confidence in our staff. Secondly, Dr. Sobchak, I appreciate your interest to do a history. We've had that history. We went through that history when we did the facilities management plan and how we've used reserves and how we plan to use reserves going forward, and it changes monthly, the percentage changes monthly depending upon our local revenue collection and our expenditures. I'm ready to move on. Rachel Leers also reviewed the semi-annual report of budget reallocations. Those are found on pages 18 through 21. That, again, is an annual exercise we do, and at this point in time, if we see that our planned expenditures in certain line items aren't going to be needed but are needed elsewhere, we make those reallocations within our budget. Tom Pacano, Vice President of Information Services and CIO, provided a quarterly update on projects and information services. The report on tech fund objectives was made available, and that is found on pages 29 and 30. Janelle Vogler, Associate Vice President of Business Services, presented the single-source purchase, again, between $50 and $150,000. That can be found on page 25. Tom Hall, Associate Vice President of Campus Services, gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects. And Tom, welcome again to the team. He's jumped in with both feet. That report is found on page 27 of the packet. He also reported on current progress of the construction projects on campus and reviewed the report on the financial status of facilities, master plan projects. That report is on page 28, and we did have discussion about, it appears that those projects are going to fall within budget as we projected, and the good work of the Rex and the staff, and now Tom. The Management Committee has reviewed recommended changes to the service of alcoholic beverages policy. We do have a couple of recommendations. And the deletion of the return checks policy, which were reported by Dr. Randy Weber, Interim Executive Vice President for Finance. The updated policies can be found in the board package on pages 14 through 17. The first alcohol and beverage policy change, really, I think the main change here includes the Libby Career and Tech Ed Center because we anticipate having social events in that facility. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve modification of the service of alcoholic beverages, policy 217.06, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to, I was talking to Mr. President, but...
Accept.
The alcohol and beverage policy 217.06. New Libby Career and Tech Ed Center. Is there any discussion? Trustee Cross.
What was the reason for the change? May I ask?
Events.
So that we could have alcoholic beverages served like we do in other parts of the campus at the Libby and Career Tech Ed Center.
Just curious.
Social events.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Trustee, any to other discussion? It's been moved by Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Ingram to approve the administration recommendation on the modification of the alcohol policy. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries unanimously.
It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the deletion of the return checks policy, 312.03, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by Trustee Snyder to approve the deletion of policy 312.03, the return check policy. Any discussion? Any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed, no? Motion carries unanimously.
Next recommendation was for a transfer of funds from the college to the foundation. The Sustainability Committee has requested that $9,000 of recycling proceeds be transferred to the foundation to be used for scholarships. Therefore, it is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees authorize the transfer of $9,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the JCC Foundation to be used for student scholarships, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cook and seconded by Trustee Cross to approve the transfer of $9,000 from the Sustainability Initiatives Fund to the Foundation for Student Scholarships. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Aye. Opposed, no?
Yes. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a yes.
I forgot to vote yes. Yes.
Okay. Passes unanimously.
You guys are going very fast.
We received a report, it's May 14th meeting, the Board of Trustees approved the establishment of a multi-year contract for banking services with U.S. Bank. This next recommendation has to do with the change in our officers to be authorized to sign on the accounts held at U.S. Bank, that being Mr. Greg Musial, Chairman, Board of Trustees, Mr. Lee Cross, Treasurer, Board of Trustees, and Dr. Joe Sobchak, President. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to designate the aforementioned individuals as authorized signers on the college's accounts, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Dr. Cook moved and Trustee Cross seconded to approve the recommendation, changes on the bank's authorized signers, as found on page 23 of the board packet. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, no? It's unanimous.
Finally, we had one recommendation based on a bid for HVAC improvements to the Industrial Training Center, ITC. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid from the Wilson Group for request for bid, RFB 20-040, Industrial Training Center, ITC HVAC improvements, Phase 2, in the amount of $226,356, with an additional 10% contingency of $22,635.60 to allow for possible unforeseen costs for a total estimated expenditure of $248,991.60, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Cook and seconded by Trustee Cross to approve the low bid of the Wilson Group for the Industrial Training Center HVAC improvements. Anybody have any questions?
I'd just like to note the importance of HVAC since we don't have windows that open. It's a sustainability measure. I've been on that for years. Just wanted to take this opportunity to raise it. I support the issue. I just think it's really important.
Thank you. Other discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just like to say I would personally appreciate a review of the revenue and the process we've used, and the rates we've had in the past, so wasn't able to communicate that earlier.
Fair point.
I would encourage you to get a copy, first of all, the April 2019 Budget Workshop materials, because it will have all of that material in it, but obviously, we all still have questions about it, so there's a lot to digest there, but we can get that to you. Trustee Lawson?
I just need to have the minutes corrected in the management meeting. I was in attendance, and that is not reflected in the minutes. And I, when I was walking into the building, the clock tower went off at 8:00, and about 15 seconds later, I walked into this committee, and this committee was already started on at least the second slideshow. So I just want to inform and make sure that our committees are starting on time so that the public knows that those times are indeed accurate. So I'd like to make sure that my name is added to that. The second question I have is, in the November board meeting, I made a request to staff, when we were given the option to present some ideas to discuss though, is to have some new, either new program options provided to the public in this committee, or to offer a significant mill back, mill levy rollback. So that was one thing that I did not ever see in this report presented in that committee. And then I also know that there was a constituent that asked to see some numbers in regards to his curiosity if the track was viable, and that was not in this part of the committee as well, which I believe in December, that constituent was told that they would be in this committee having some type of report. So I just want to make sure that that was provided to the constituent.
I'm not sure what minutes you're talking about, because minutes in the packet are December meeting minutes, and you do not appear in those, but I don't believe you appeared at the December minute.
Yes, I was.
Mr. Chair, two responses. Number one, we did start that meeting at 8:00. In fact, I forget who was sitting next to me, and I said, "Do you see 8:00 on the clock and 8:00 on the phone?" And it was 8:00, so I will stand that we started that meeting at 8:00. I apologize that if you came a few seconds later, you weren't in on the beginning of that first presentation. Secondly, I'm not sure what constituent Trustee Lawson is referring to, but I have had meetings with a constituent that wanted some information on the viability of the track, and that is in process. So thank you.
I do stand that this committee had started after or before 8:00 AM. I just want to make sure that that is something that we take notice to. The constituent did ask these questions, and they did it within a timely manner, and I think it's the right of the college to be able to present to see if their request is indeed viable, as well as my request that I made in a timely manner as well.
Can we call the question? There's nothing, no question on the, there's no question before us. It's a comment. With respect to your request in December, I remember when you were on the phone...
November.
November, about how the budget would work. We're in the middle of the start of the budget process now, and so any questions about new programs, mill levy rollback, reserve levels, will certainly be part of that process, and we will have a full budget presentation in April that we'll all learn about the budget presentations from the administration. And we will vote on a management budget in May, as we always do, and then we will have a public hearing in August and adopt the actual budget. So I think everybody that is in that budget process heard your comments on the phone.
In November, but I haven't seen anything in...
I don't think you're going to see anything, any trustee says, "I want this in the budget", that you see something in that until the administration has gone through the budget process.
But yet, last budget cycle, you had asked the Management Committee to look at whether the rollback should be .15. So how, how do you get that? How do I, as I'm putting in input in November, not get that?
I, if I remember right, I asked that the budget guidelines reflect a budget rollback, or would, there would be a mill levy rollback if the assessed values came in higher.
That's what I did in November.
I don't think I got anything out of that meeting, but we all have the same input into the budget process, and, you know, my best suggestion to any board member is you put it in writing and send it to the President, who can then work it through the budget process, and you can bring that up in April at the Budget Workshop.
So what I mentioned here in requests in a public meeting is not taken? I have to go and write it, and that's how it's taken?
I would suggest that would be the best practice for every trustee, because the public meeting is not well-articulated sometimes as to what everybody wants, and the budget process is underway. As you know, we start that in September for a vote next August, so if there's something in particular that you ought to, you want, I would request that you send it to the President.
So you're saying, because I did a request in the public meeting in November, which was the first time we were able to discuss this new budget, that that was not the right process, but I wasn't informed of that, so it's not an option to look at?
I think it's an option to look at. Again, my recommendation is, Chair, knowing the budget process as you do after going through it two years, is that you put it in writing, because...
No, I don't.
What I remember you saying is, "We need a whole bunch more technical programs, or we need a significant mill levy rollback." Neither of those are specific enough for budget purposes for our administration to do anything about it.
I think I was pretty specific, and we can go back, so I just, I'm just wondering, so it went nowhere.
What's next?
Today, we had our first, the budget kickoff, and over, I don't know, how many budget managers do we have?
We, I want to be careful speaking. I want to say over 100, like 105, 110 budget managers, but we have, so part of the issue with the discussion that's going on right now is that we will not have projections for tax revenue until early in the spring when we meet with the county treasurer. So in prior years when we've had this conversation, the discussion around mill levy rollback is when revenue may have exceeded the projected budget amount that's in the budget guidelines. The discussion has revolved around budget revenues exceeding expenses, so we do not know what revenues will be. We're anticipating, we're building, we built some beliefs into our budget guidelines, but that's all they are until budget administrators, until the taxing authority, the appraiser in the county sends us our projections. We're working on a lot of speculation. That's usually why when we get to April, we have a little more clarity on what budget individuals are requesting for expenses, what the revenues will be, but we are too early in the process to know what revenues will be to determine what expense could cover those.
Except I'm told that I need to put my request in in November, so if I did the request, but now it's too late...
It's not too late. The budget is in process. It just started, really, today, and so this will evolve. This budget process takes almost 12 months. It's extremely long, and so there's plenty of time to consider various issues and various, you know, opportunities with the budget. So we welcome your input, just, you know, if...
I did my input in November.
That's fine, then we'll go back and we'll use your input from November.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Trustee Cook.
I remember Trustee Lawson on the phone saying that I'd, see, the issue is that we put out the budget guidelines to activate them, and we have this alarm that if I don't get something said in November or before the process, I am fearful that when we get to May when we adopt our operating budget, and then when we get to the fall when we adopt the official budget, excuse me, the answer will be, "Well, we didn't know about that at the time." And I think Dr. Weber has just given a good explanation. Trustee Lawson has gone on record as saying, "If it's possible, I'd like to roll the mill levy back."
Or programs.
Or programs back. And I don't think we have, so that's stated. We understand that, and that's what I think Dr. Sobchak is saying, yes, we'll consider that. We've had discussion in the past when we've adopted budgets where a trustee or two has said, "I'm not in favor of increasing the levy or rolling it back that far," based upon what our budget is going to be, which just started today. We'll get lots of energy in the next few weeks from our departments and our programs when the assessed valuation comes out of the county, and we make a projection of so much growth. We've been conservative on that over the years, but who's to say that that projection is always going to be accurate? Then we arrive at a mill levy. If the assessed valuation drives enough revenue where we can roll the mill levy back, or we can roll the mill levy back, I've heard you say clearly that you'd like to roll the mill levy back. And I think we all understand that. But we, we, we can't say tonight that, yes, we're going to roll the mill levy back, because we don't know all the pieces of the formula.
That's not what I stated. So I think it's an opportunity to have input, and so I feel like I'm not able to have input, because from what I'm hearing, the process that we've done for the last two years that I've been on here, the precedent has been you state a request, so that the public understands what's happening. And then I can send in if someone has questions. But I've done that process.
Your, your statement, as I recall it, and maybe you recall it more clearly than I do, was that you want more programs that will allow certificates or technical programs for people to get short-term certificates or otherwise improve themselves. And if not, then you wanted a significant mill levy rollback.
I actually stated, we can go back to the transcript if you like, that I made a request to have staff present some new program options, so that the public who provide the services with their, the cash reserves, or offer some significant mill back, mill levy rollback. And so I think that is the request that I made, and I was given the understanding that it would be considered in management committee, and I haven't seen anything.
Those, those program requests are the things that come through the natural budget request process, and we're not done, we've not concluded that. We just kicked that off with staff and budget administrators today. We would not know what program requests for next year's budget they have yet. It's too early for that. So we don't know what requests we have to compare against existing revenues. We have to let them submit them by the budget deadline, and we have to know what the appraiser tells us our assessed valuation projections are, to make those comparisons, to say, yes, we have more requests for programs, or we have assessed valuation and not support it. It's, it's too early to answer those questions.
I'm going to suggest that any trustee that has a specific program or something definitive enough that the administration could actually review it, as a program, policy, technical certificate, other method of expending money, get that to the administration as soon as possible, so that they can evaluate it once they know what the revenues are, and can rank it against other program requests that come up every year through the budget directors, who suggest something new or different.
I think it's important that the public hear what is being requested.
Well, what I heard you request is programs, and I don't think we're going to beat that dead horse anymore tonight of what programs means. If you have programs in mind that you don't think are percolating up from the faculty-
I'm not talking about mine.
-or from the administration, or from anybody else, then you please share those with, with Dr. Sopcic or the rest of the board.
But you're suggesting that all the board members, instead of saying it to the public right now, to submit their requests to staff, I'm saying I think it's important that the public hear the requests that are being asked.
Why don't you submit your requests, and we can make those, we can post those publicly, so people know what programs you're going to request? My problem is-
Well, that's getting into the weeds.
You're asking these guys, the administration, to go out and say, "Get some programs."
Isn't that governance?
They're looking at programs every day. No, I'm going to, we have a process, and you can submit something more specific to the president to use in the budget process. They've heard what you said in November. If that's specific enough that they can use that, then they can. I don't think it is, but we're not going to take more time at this meeting trying to identify what it is that are programs out there that any trustee might want.
Mr. Chair, final comment.
Trustee Cook.
For the public that's watching this tonight, we have over 100 advocacy committees that work with all of our departments and all of our programs. And, and we have a staff and faculty that are current with trends and what's going on in their, their departments. And I would, I would remind this board that I don't see it as me as a trustee having a program interest, just because I want to have that program. It should be in the budget process. We have several steps of, through those, those ad hoc committees and those advisory committees, to give input to our various departments. We have an ed affairs committee that deals with all of the issues, whether it be a state requirement or a federal requirement, and they're the experts that, that will make determination as to what new programs we should have in our curriculum. And so this, this issue of, of the community should drive the decision on new programs is in place with all of our advisory committees and our ad hoc committees, and I would let that process work. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, trustee Smith Everett.
I am personally reading the first 30 years of Johnson County Community College, and there is quite a precedent for trustees speaking up and advocating for certain programs, very specific PEP projects or things that they think the college should embrace. But I do agree with what, with what trustee Lawson said about the public knowing those. So if I could offer that we, moving forward, would always publicly address those, mention those, and then follow them up, so that administration is clear on what we're asking for, and that we're clear on how we want or when we want follow-up, and understand that as a budget process unfolds, we will be advocating or asking for that to come up again, just as a way to bring the two, I think, issues together and try to move forward in this meeting.
I totally agree. If I support an aviation technology program, and I tell this board, and I tell the administration, "I want that in the budget," then in April, it isn't in there. I can advocate for it, and if four members of this board say we're going to have an aviation technology program, we'll have it. And that's, that's the process that I think is, you've talked about historically, and that, that works and allows the administration to have some idea of what they are being asked to do by a trustee and prioritizing budget items. Trustee Lawson, you have the last word, if you do in a couple minutes.
So in the management committee packet, I noticed, and I don't know if Tom Pagano can maybe answer this on the spot, he's pretty proficient in this, or to get back to me on this information. You presented a slide of the new budget for the IT department, and you mentioned something about the fiscal year 2020 network switch refresh. And so I just kind of wanted to know, how many switches do we have? What happens to the old switches? And how much are these switches? Because online, they could vary from 10,000 to 28,000. What are the switches that we're using?
We use Cisco switches. That's our standard. We use those for, for the extension of the network at the college. We spend just south of about $1 million a year on refreshing the entire network, which includes about $600,000 or $700,000 worth of switches, depending on how you categorize them, when they're rotated out. But they're all Cisco switches. They're all the latest types of switches that are driven by the need, again, academic need, or the non-academic society need. They, basically, there's a replacement schedule and follow-up.
Okay. So do you have, should I get back to you on the cost, like, per switch, how much they are?
There's a range of switches, depending on what building, what those switches are serving, how they're behaving, et cetera. So just like automobiles, you have a range of sizes of switch. So each switch comes with a different cost. Each of those switches also have software and licensing attached to that, which also drives that cost. So you could, at the one end, is where we try to look at it with that tech fund, because we look at that to say it's roughly about $1 million a year for the entire network, and again, about $500,000 to $700,000 in a given year, just for the switches and, and that, that, that component, or those components of the network. But yes, we have all of that in detail in our budget every year. There's a budget book that we hand out at the beginning of the fiscal year that highlights and breaks down every single building, with all the switches in that building, down to the actual switch ID, both in terms of its fixed asset ID, as well as the main model of the Cisco switches. The retirement of those switches, you might recall, I believe, maybe in the audit committee where it presented, where all the disposal policies that we, we subscribe to at the college, we follow those, all our PCs, all our switches, all our equipment is, goes through that designation that is, that is set out by the standards organization, where, where by all the, the data is grown from that equipment, it is sent back to the manufacturer, it's not let out to the gray market, or eBay or anything like that. So that's, that's how we dispose it.
And in that booklet, it, it has a number of how many switches we have, because somewhere online, also, other people have about 80,000 of these switches. So when I think about, you know, $28,000 per switch, I mean, I can see that this adds up. But then also, the trash policy went up from 25,000 to 50,000. So the concern is, what do we do? Because not everything gets turned back in. Some charities, I think we had, don't accept this. So then what, where do they go?
For Cisco equipment, we, that, that all goes back to the Cisco.
As a trade-in?
Yes, as a trade-in. That is, that is the way, of course. We, we do not resell any Cisco. That is actually in our agreement. That is actually against the standards that we subscribe to. The gray market, the Cisco switching environment is one that we would never-
Okay. Thank you. And if there's a way to get a look at that booklet, I don't know if we can have a copy, or-
Yes, it's a publicly available book. It's about the age that we can easily provide.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
And the budget book that the board has presented after we adopt the budget in August includes all of those major expenditure items, line itemed in the back, almost ad nauseam, but not quite. So that information is out there and is, is available to anybody in the public that would like it. Okay, we're ready, I think, for president's recommendations for action. Treasurer's report now, trustee Cross.
Yeah. If I may, could, could I call Rachel Learst to the stand?
You can call her the podium.
The podium, right.
Not going to swear her in.
For what purpose? Yeah. For control. She, she writes my report. She's our vice president of financial services, so I, I thought I'd have her, if she could come-
She emailed it to you.
I was going to have you read it. She's our vice president of financial affairs. She handles our budget.
She prepared the summary for you, and-
She prepares the summary. I'm just the figurehead up here, reading it. So if, if she would like to, I'd like to encourage her to-
Are you, are you able to present the summary?
I'm happy to do that.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot. We had not planned this. I, I've had a, a rough evening, so. Ms. Learst, I am the treasurer. You prepare the information that I read, and you prepare, I believe, the treasurer's report. Is that correct?
My staff does, yes.
Well, thank you. You could have just taken credit.
Absolutely.
If you could read the treasurer's report, please.
Sure. Okay. The board packet contains the treasurer's report for the month ended November 30th, 2019. Some items of note include, page one is the general post-secondary technical education fund summary. November was the fifth month of the college's 2019-2020 fiscal year. During November, the college made $1,509,475 in scheduled principal and interest payments on its Series 2011, 2012, and 2015 revenue bonds. The college's unencumbered cash balance, or our reserve level, was, as of November 30th, 2019, in all funds, $68.4 million, which is approximately $1.4 million lower than at the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating funds are within approved budgetary limits. Do I read the recommendation?
You, you did. Please.
It is the recommendation of the administration that the Board of Trustees approved the treasurer's report for the month ended November 30th, 2019, subject to audit.
Ms. Learst, thank you. I so move, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Been moved by trustee Cross.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Snyder, that we approve the trustee, or the treasurer's report for the month ended November 30th?
Yes.
2019, subject to audit. Are there any questions? Trustee Lawson?
Page 38. I don't know who I'm asking here. The November 30th, 2019, it's the general post-secondary technical education funds, and it's going over from adjusted budget activity this month, activity year-to-date, year-to-date as a percentage of budget, and then prior-year activity, and then the percentage rate.
Yes.
What was kind of interesting to me is the percentage rate of how far off we are on some of these budgets. So event officials was off by 132%. Lobbyist services, 100%. I'm trying to think, let's go down. There was one for, yes, 1,000. So building improvements, 1,034%. So can you explain to me? Because that seems like-
Right. So now, the, the column that says YTD as a percent of budget, so that means as of November 30th. So as I mentioned, that's only five months out of the 12 months of the fiscal year.
Right.
So sometimes it looks like, for example, on event officials, we haven't spent very much of the money yet that was appropriated, because we've only spent, we've only been through five of the 12 months. So as we have second semester sporting events, in that example, we'll expend the remainder of that budget. The percent on the very far column, on the right-hand side, where it says YTD change from prior year, that's just the year-to-date change from November of 2019 versus November of 2018.
So it's showing-
For instance, we, we spent a bunch of money this year that was budgeted and proved and planned on buildings.
In the building improvements example, yes. I was-
So we're 1,000% more than we spent last year when we were starting the building process?
Yes.
Okay. So on the event officials, is there a reason we're doing more events?
Basketball.
This, well, no, this fund is the adult sub-post-secondary is, is, is a, so some of the event officials, yeah, some of them can, can be athletics. Sometimes we host events on our campus on a not annual basis. And so we could, we'd have to go into that line and determine what those event official expenses were.
And a lot of times, the fluctuations are just timing related. I mean, again, something may happen in November one year, and it happens in December the next year, so you see things match up better as we move throughout the year.
But this was the year-to-date, so just looking at the budget from last year to this year. So is there a way I can get any more information on some of these specific percentages that are over 100%, to understand that a little bit more as we go on?
Sure.
Thank you.
I, I move that we adopt the treasurer's report, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved and seconded. That was part of discussion, I believe. So is there any more questions about the treasurer's report?
Thank you. Vice President.
If not all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
No.
Those no?
No.
It's six to one with trustee Lawson voting no. Next item is the monthly report to the board. Dr. Sopcic.
I, Mr. Chair, I just want to get one thing straight. So as this budget process goes, then we can expect programmatic recommendations from all seven board members, that being academic programs, as well as just regular programs, right? And those will be submitted to the administration for review. So every board member will submit, if they wish, programmatic recommendations, be they academic or just operating, or, or anything.
And how about the constituents?
No, I'm talking anything. I mean-
Constituents?
I'm talking board members.
So how do the constituents put input?
Well, if this board would like to change that approach to budgeting and open it up to the entire community, to all of Johnson County's 500, is it 500,000 residents?
Aren't those our taxpayers that-
Absolutely. I would be totally welcome, I would totally welcome 500,000 budget recommendations.
If, this is the board of trustees.
That sounds sarcastic.
This is the, trustee Lawson, please, this is the governing body. We represent those 500,000 Johnson County citizens, and if we have specific recommendations that I, that we want to make on a budget program, I think we're entitled to make it. I also believe our professional staff, who are trained in both administering and teaching and building, have the right to review those and prioritize those and come back to us in a budget in April. And if we don't like that budget presentation in April, as a board, we can modify it. We can modify it in August after the public hearing. I don't think it is fair to the administration for us to each send our top 10 priorities to them, but I can't stop anybody from doing that. And if you want to do it in a public fashion, then send your, send your, in your program ideas to the president, copy the board, and I expect the professional staff to prioritize those based on what programs we have, what, what our faculty is saying ought to be programs, what money we have, and bring us back a budget in April that has a sufficient reserves and sufficient expenditures and revenues to make this college sustainable. I don't think that's any different than what we've done in the past, except now we're acting like nobody has any input into the budget, which I don't think is true.
Mr. Chair, that is not true. So we have not had that policy, and from the beginning that I've been on this board, it's to come here and ask and, and talk to the people, because this is their institution. They have a right to know what is being requested and what is being asked around the board. That's why we have an open meeting. So I made the request in November. There was a constituent who wrote in their request. They also came out of their way to show up to the public, to the public forum, and made the same request. And these requests are not being partis, they're not part of the ba, the budget, which last semester, last time we looked at it, there was a difference in, one of the requests that you had was to look at a different mill levy rollback, which was different than the staff. So I'm just trying to understand how the rules have changed.
I don't believe the rules have changed at all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, trustee Cross.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt you. Don't our professional staff have a duty, as they've always done, to see what is necessary and proper in the normal course of administration of, of a community college, and make, make their professional judgments accordingly? So it's not ours to micromanage-
So, it's not ours to micromanage. It is, nevertheless, for us to trust them and do what needs to be done. I mean, they're the ones who, they're the professionals in the industry, so they know what needs to be done, and they can't just take a political wish list and implement it. They need to do what's necessary for the community and for the organization.
So, we don't have oversight?
I...
Trust the staff?
I'm going to stick with the statements that if you want, if you have specific programmatic requests that you receive from a constituent, or you have yourself as a member of the board, you submit it to Dr. Sobczak. If we can put a list together and we can say, who made the request, and we can put it out on the, post it on the website, we can make it public in a meeting. But, that budget process is driven by the administration's budget process, which comes up from over 140, I think I saw Rachel say, 140 budget directors who know what is going on on this campus, who know what programs we have, whether they're academic or student support, or scholarship, or otherwise, and they will make requests. And the, any requests we make as a board individually can be reviewed against those priorities. You're talking about Dennis Batliner, is the constituent that showed up and wanted to put the track back in, and at the meeting I pointed out, that's a $2.5 million expenditure for 2020, fiscal year 2021, if we do it. This board can do that. Four members of this board can take $2.5 million out of our reserves and build a new track somewhere and spend $500,000 on the track and cross-country program. We can do that. That will be reviewed by the, by the administration, which I think will prioritize that appropriately. But, we're not going to make those decisions until we see the budget in April, and the board, or the administration can't take into account what individual employees or employees or department heads or members of this board want if you say, I want programs. I want programs. I mean, there's got to be something more specific if a trustee is looking to institute a conversation that might lead to a budget priority for a particular program.
The constituent...
If the board wants to do it some other way, there's other ways to do it that would tax our administration more than it needs to be.
I think it's the, we have an obligation to the public that if they ask to find out what the numbers look like, that we give them that opportunity.
They will get the numbers. As soon as we have the appraisers and treasurers estimate of appraised value for this year, we will have an estimate of the revenues that we have. We will have budget items, budget directors that will go through the expenditures, and whether they fund an existing program more, they delete a program, or they add a new program. They will make that recommendation. It will percolate up from 140 budget directors.
Isn't it our responsibility as representatives to give them that information?
I told you, you can.
That's the first time I've heard this.
Please email your recommendations to Dr. Sobczak.
No, the information you mentioned about a specific date, when numbers are going to be revealed, to, back to the constituent.
Every March, approximately, and probably in February, Ms. Learz and Dr. Larson has come back to us and told us, we've heard from the appraiser, or we've met from the, with the appraiser, and he says that appraised values are going to go up 6.8 percent.
That will not occur till the March board meeting.
And we will get that any update in February. We will get an update in March. That will drive the numbers in the budget discussion in April, but there is no way to get those numbers faster than that. So, every year, those numbers are absolutely made public. They're made known to this board, they're in our April budget book, they're in the May budget discussion, they're in the August budget book, they're in the August public hearing, and then they're published in the budget book that comes out as the official budget of the college. So, if there's some suggestion that we're not giving people numbers about what the tax revenues are for this college, or the tuition that we're budgeting or projecting, that's simply incorrect.
Mr. Chair, that's not what I've been asking. I haven't been asking for tax revenue numbers. I've been asking for a constituent who came here, sent in an email specifically asking to have his request looked at to see if it's viable, and it was stated to him that it would be in the management committee, and that is not happening.
I don't, I don't recall that discussion.
It's in the minutes.
We, I'm, we can, we visit this after the meeting if you'd like to.
Let's move on.
But, this is a public meeting. They have the right to know this discussion instead of private meetings.
This is a, this is a public meeting. We're talking about something that's not on the agenda. We've dragged it out. I've made as great an accommodation as I can about, Mr. Batliner's request has been submitted, and everybody at this podium, at this dais heard it, except Trustee Smith-Everett, who wasn't on the board at the time.
I did. I was in the...
You were in the audience. And in April, the budget, the administration will make a recommendation as to whether we do that or not.
Mm-hmm.
Trustee Smith.
So, my understanding is in March and April, these requests will be, the feasibility of such requests, we will be able to see once we have the numbers from the state?
Yeah.
So, we can expect these to come in March or April?
In March, we will find out what the revenue, the abhorrent property tax revenues will be.
Okay.
And then in April, we will have the budget proposal from the administration that will indicate, how are we going to spend that money?
Okay. And then I heard you say that in August, the board, is that the public meeting is in August, or that's when the board can revise?
The board is, what we do here, so it's clear to everybody, including those watching, in April, we have a budget workshop specifically devoted to, what does the budget look like for the next fiscal year? In May, we adopt a management budget, which allows our administration to then issue contracts so that people can get their contract in place for July 1, which is the start of the new fiscal year. In August, by statute, every public body has to have a public hearing whereby anybody can come to this podium, talk about what they think ought to be in the budget, and then the board has the opportunity to revise the budget, adopt it as presented, or otherwise.
Okay.
Once that's done, then it goes to the county, and the county appraiser and treasurer set the mill levy, based on final appeals of taxes and other things. And we have, but the final budget adoption is after a public hearing in August.
Okay.
April is the first opportunity to really review what the administration is proposing and say, I like that, I don't like that, I want to do this, I don't want to do that.
Okay.
But, in order for the administration to consider that and prioritize those things, if you have a, something definitive enough to have them evaluate it, my suggestion is you get it to them as soon as possible. Would you like to take over with the President's monthly update?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I'd like to talk about students, since that's what we're here for. We had a couple in-services this, this past week. I don't know if you were able to attend. They're kind of like little mini in-service presentations. And one of the highlights was the presentation by Dr. Weber of our student satisfaction scores. And Randy presented quite a few slides and quite a few numbers about how these students, our students responded to various aspects of the college, be it how they were treated, their experiences in the classroom, a long array of numbers. And we're so thrilled, we're so thrilled that over the past four years, five years, whatever, every single report is, moves up and gets better and better, and our report, and our scores also surpass what's happening nationally at community colleges across the country. Except, we did come up short, I believe, in one area, or was it two? And what were those, Randy?
Parking on campus is adequate, and I know what's going on on campus, both things that we...
There you go. Both things that we can, that we can try to work on. And I think that reflects an incredible effort by everybody on campus, trying to make sure that our students are welcomed here and that they have a satisfying experience. And we've been able to, and we've done a really good job with that. As we go through this budget process, and obviously, it's been a topic of discussion tonight, I think one of our objectives is to make it as student-focused as possible. So, it's student-centered in every which way when we assess and evaluate all of these recommendations that will bubble up from over 140 budget managers. In front of you is, all trustees have been given this book, and it's 13 ideas that are transforming the community college world. 13 ideas that represent the, I guess, initiatives and programs of community colleges that are kind of leading the way across the country in student success. Because the mission of the community college isn't just access, the mission of the student, of the community college is also the success of the students who attend here. And not just those students with the highest ACT scores, but every student who comes in there, in here, and are we giving them the best chance for success. So, I would hope, I would hope that, and I've highlighted some chapters. And by the way, this represents the work of basically iconic community college leaders, people who've dedicated their lives to studying and working in the community college arena. So, with these books, I've highlighted some chapters, and I hope you have the chance to take the time to read them, and perhaps our conversations regarding the budget can be focused on programmatic ideas and ways that our investment can result in increases in student success here at Johnson County Community College. That will be the goal. Cabinet as well will have copies of this, and we hope to use this as perhaps a compass to lead us through this budget process. That's it. concludes my report.
Any questions to the President?
I would love to see the presentation you made about the student, was it...
Yes, student satisfaction scores. Noel Lovitz.
Okay. I personally would love to see a copy of that.
Sure. For the board's benefit, it is the presentation that was made to the board, I think, in October, but obviously, you weren't here then.
I was, I was here, so I, I am familiar with that.
It's something we can be very proud of.
I, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, I would also love to say, this is a great opportunity for me to advocate for Shawnee Mission to have a snow day tomorrow so that I can catch up on my reading for the February meeting. So, I just wanted to make that in a public statement, that Shawnee Mission...
Aletha's already canceled.
Give me, okay. I hope, I hope that means I'll have time for the reading.
They coordinate very closely, so I suspect all Johnson County School Districts will be closed tomorrow.
If I may, I have a quick question.
Trustee Cross?
I, I think I read that book, or I skimmed it, let's be honest. But, I want to say that this President's Cabinet has been the most diverse that we ever had in the history of the school. And in his time, we had our first-ever minority trustee on this board. So, I just wanted to note that for any relevant record, that, and when Trust, Vice President Larson left, you know, a national talent that Dr. Sobczak hired here, she said that this was an extremely professional staff that worked hard to maintain student success.
I'd like to point out, I guess you're in reference to diversity of, diversity of color, correct?
Well, color, there's been women in the cabinet. I mean, I said Judy Korb left, but I know that we had other women in the cabinet, so...
And I, and I think the point that I want to make is also diversity of ideas. Every one of our cabinet members has very strong positions on different areas that we discuss. And when we talk about things, it's, it's, it's pretty intense sometimes. I mean, you know, sometimes we have to restrain Dr. McLeod from across the table.
Primarily during the bowl game, if I remember right.
Right. But, the outcome of that is always positive, and we try to make sure that whatever we do is in the best interest of students. But, I thank you for pointing that out.
Yes, thank you.
I think we're ready to move on to old business, President?
Mr. Chair, if I could.
Yes, Trustee Cook.
I want to beat this horse one more time. And it's really for the public in the community. If you watch this meeting tonight, you'd think there's dysfunction and challenges, but I'm always amazed at the President's report. Tonight, it's about 35, 36 pages. I was so interested in Dr. Harvey's comments about her being so proud to work on this campus and be able to represent the college with other colleges in the state. But, it's that program, there's all those pages, every month. And Dr. Harvey can't explain all of those good news items in her report, but there's faculty member after faculty member, staff member after staff member, employee after employee in that report that has, has done outstanding accomplishments, has achieved outstanding accomplishments with their students and the people they work with. And, and I guess, Mr. Gray, I would just challenge us, if there was a way that we could get some of that information out into the community, because we have award-winning programs, the implication is that there's no avenue for community members to have input into what we offer. Those reports, month after month, are a reflection to me that we're not doing such a bad job of program offerings to students and the success they have. So, again, I want to compliment you, Joe, and the cabinet, the staff, the department heads, all the people that put countless minutes, hours into that report, and it's a great marketing piece for this college, so thank you for the time.
You still have the floor, Dr. Cook, for the Presidential Search Committee update.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate the opportunity. I did meet with, a visit on the phone with Janice Fitzgerald of AGB today, as a matter of fact. As you'll recall on the timeline, and by the way, I would, I would encourage people to go to the website, we have a special link on our website for Presidential Search, and I believe, Becky, that that's updated as we get updates. We had a deadline of yesterday, January 15th, for resumes, and it's not uncommon on searches like this, that there may be people that have put it off and still want to apply. So, what Nancy and I talked about today, as being chair and co-chairs, to extend that deadline to Monday at 5:00. It's over the weekend, Martin Luther King holiday on Monday as well. And so, we've made that extension on the recommendation of AGB. I'm proud to say that as of this morning, we have 67 applicants, and we're anticipating a few more over the next few days, so we, it's likely we'll have over 70 applicants. I think it'd be important for the community, I'd like to review the names of the search committee, if I could, Mr. Chair. What we tried to do with the search committee, the search committee has had two very, very, very productive meetings. Each one of the members have signed a confidentiality agreement, and as we deal with these 70-plus resumes, it's very important for the search committee to keep that information confidential, because all of these people, most of these people, I assume, are working in current jobs. And it's, it's emphasized by the search committee time and time again that we need to keep those resumes confident at this time. And we have also gone through two training sessions. One is the, as was mentioned by Dr. Harvey, the college hiring process, and also the unbiased conscious, the unconscious bias awareness training. And Trustee Lawson has asked about reference to that. I believe, as I've gone through that, that would be good for all trustees to go through, not just for a presidential search, but just how we look at the world every day. And perhaps, Becky, at some point, all trustees can have that experience. So, on the committee, in no particular order, Carol Sater is a member. She represents the community and the foundation. Been very active in our foundation, past trustee of this college and a longtime community member. Marshawn Butler at Children's Mercy Hospital represents the foundation and the community, and I believe is she the new chair of the foundation, or will be the new chair of the foundation. Dr. Harvey, as we've talked about, representing the Faculty Association and faculty. Teresa McChesney, representing Educational Affairs and the faculty, being, we're about students, and thank you, Dr. Sobczak, for bringing up students tonight. We thought it was important for Educational Affairs to have input. Karen Martley, Workforce Development, represents the cabinet. Workforce Development is one of our pillars of the college in terms of how we help businesses develop their workforce. Rachel Learz from the Finance, we deal with dimes and nickels a lot, and we thought it would be important to have a perspective on finance, represents staff. Ann Keat, Preside, President of the Student Senate, we are about students and wanted to have a student representative on that committee. Donnie Witten is past president of the Student Senate, but also an alumni of the college, current staff member of the college, and a veteran, and just brings a lot of expertise and awareness from various segments of our community. And then, John Allison, Superintendent of Schools at Aletha. You've heard a lot of reports about the work we're doing with K through 12 programs, and we thought it was important to have K through 12 represented. Included in those other nine, then, are Nancy Ingram, trustee, and myself as trustee. And Mr. Musil has asked us to continue as chair and vice chair as we move ahead. Confidentiality, I mentioned, is very important, so the committee, I'm sure, will be asked about who's applied and who's not applied, and please understand that they probably won't tell you, or shouldn't tell you, because all those names are very confident. We'll have access to those resumes tomorrow, the search committee will, and with instructions on how to go through and evaluate them, search committee will meet with AGB on January 30, and we will then go through the process of screening down to semifinalists. Our discussion with this board back in October was that... Our discussion with this Board back in October was that we were, again, on the recommendation of AGB, hopeful to come down with eight to 10 semifinalists, which the Search Committee will vet thoroughly, and then that we would bring to this Board of Trustees, who will make the final decision, three to four candidates. And we're working under that same assumption. If that's not the assumption that this Board wants to follow, then we really need to know that. But that's, that's kind of how we're, we're working right now. I'd like you to reserve a couple of dates, March 2 and March 3 will be days that we're scheduled to bring in finalists to interview with the Board. And at this point, depending upon how many that will be and where we are, I'd ask you to block out both days. Our ultimate goal is to have a selection by March, our March Board Meeting, which is March 19. And so the committee will have a lot of work to do here in the next, the next few weeks as we go through that process of purring down those resumes. I think it was November, we, we passed out this piece, Executive Leadership Transitioning at Community Colleges. And it's put out by the American Association of Community Colleges, an ACCT. And I don't think, Trustee Smith Everett, you have one? I'm not sure you got one, because you weren't here. And Trustee Cross, you might not have received this because you weren't here. So I want to make sure you have that. In addition to the book that Joe, Dr. Sobchak referenced, that about executive leadership transitioning at community colleges, a pretty powerful document, and I'd ask you to study that and read that before we, before we proceed with our interviews. So with that, Mr. Chair, thanks for the update. We're excited about the number of applicants we have and the enthusiasm that our Search Committee has with that number, as well as Janice indicated that they have visited with over 50 of the candidates themselves, both Janice and Jim, and they think we have a pretty nice, interesting pool. So with that, that concludes my report.
Questions? Trustee Snyder?
One quick question on that last, the 50 candidates that, that the Search Committees talked with, is it in relation to this job, or they have past experience with them?
You mean AGB?
Yes, I'm sorry, what did I say? Committee, I'm sorry, the consultants.
AGB thoroughly understands the profile, but most of these people are also current, current employees. Many of them are at community colleges.
Okay.
And so I, I think they are...
So they're familiar with them?
Very familiar with many of them, yes.
Other questions?
Point of clarification, Janice and Jim, are they AGB consultants, or?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we went through a process of interviewing consulting firms. And Jim McCormick and Janice Fitzgerald represent, there are contacts with AGB, and they're the consultants on this project.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Trustee Cook. The next item on old business follows from our discussions at this Board Meeting in November and December. At the December Meeting, I think it was Trustee Snyder brought up the notion of putting something out to the public to explain the situation we were going through. And so I drafted a letter that was in the Board Packet that I intend to read now so that the public does understand the circumstances. It's addressed to members of Johnson County Community College and the Johnson County community. As Chair of the Johnson County Community Board of Trustees, one of my duties is to act as spokesperson for the Board in communicating with the public. I've prepared this statement with that duty in mind. In December, the JCC board voted to begin an investigation that may lead to the consideration of a resolution of censure against a Board Member. I hope this statement will clarify why that action was taken and will help explain both the process and timing for the Board's next steps. I start by noting that the written policies adopted by the Board that govern the conduct of Board Members. Those policies include, among other provisions, a code of conduct and a list of duties and responsibilities of the Board. The relevant policies can be found on the college website. Serious violations of the Board and college policies can lead to a resolution of censure, a resolution of censure of a trustee, but only after the Board adopts findings of fact regarding the trustee's conduct. With that background, how did we get to where we are today? In November 2019, the Board learned of an anonymous, undisclosed email alleging various ethical and policy misconduct by the college and college employees. The email author claimed to be a JCC board member, and the email was sent to unidentified recipients. The public may review the email and the college's initial response to the facts alleged in it on the college's website. The email was discussed at length in both the November and December Board Meetings, which all seven trustees attended. Six of the seven trustees denied any involvement in the email, the seventh neither admitted nor denied involvement. After discussion at those two separate meetings, the Board voted to follow Board Policies by beginning a fact-finding investigation to consider a resolution of censure against the email's presumed author based on possible violations of college policies. The Board's concerns included multiple factual inaccuracies contained in the email, secretive nature and intent of the email, effective allegations of misconduct against identified members of the college's professional staff, impact on JCC's relationship with other community colleges, given the email's listing of two other Kansas community colleges, failure of the author to self-identify or identify recipients of the email, and failure to use established college processes to raise grievances or concerns. A fact-finding investigation is now underway. The college has engaged an outside attorney to conduct this investigation. The attorney has been in contact with each member of the Board, as well as senior staff, to begin that process. Because the investigation is ongoing, there is no action item to be considered at this January 16th Board Meeting. We anticipate the investigation will be completed before the February 20, 2020 Board Meeting, so that the Board may consider adopting findings of fact and a resolution of censure at that meeting. The discussion and process that led to the Board's action initiating the investigation may be found by reviewing the video and/or transcript of the November and December Meetings, along with reviewing the email that triggered the discussion. Videos of the November and December Meeting may be found at the college website. The materials posted on the college's website are consistent with the college's procedures to make available to the public not just the Board of Trustees' meeting agendas, but agenda-supporting material, the full video of each regular Board Meeting, and the minutes and transcript of each Board Meeting. I encourage anyone interested in the college and its governance to review those sources to fully understand the current situation and to be informed of the college, about the college as a whole. Please know that your interest in the college is appreciated, and that we are committed to serving you in the best interest of the college you fund, support, use, and enjoy. Sincerely, Greg Elmusel, Chair, JCC Board of Trustees. At the February Meeting, we, as I noted, we anticipate having the findings of fact report from the investigating attorney, and at that time, the Board can choose whether or not to take any action. With that, I'm ready to move to the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion? The Consent Agenda is a portion of the meeting where routine business is considered. It's business that has been considered by the administration and committees. They are usually consensus items that are acted on collectively and approved in a single motion vote. Any member of the Board may request that a particular item be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered, debated, and voted upon separately. Are there any items anybody would like to pull from the Consent Agenda tonight? Trustee Lawson?
The cash disbursement summary on pages 50 and 51.
Anything else? Is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda except for the cash disbursement summary on pages 50 and 51?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Snyder to approve the Consent Agenda as published with the exception of the cash disbursement summary on pages 50 and 51. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, there's also, I think, the minutes. Yes, I'd like to pull the minutes as well.
You want to pull the minutes from the December 12th Meeting?
The minutes aren't labeled, so I don't know. I guess that's what I'm, whatever was...
They're not, they don't have a page number, but the minutes of the meeting from December 12th are part of our packet. Do you want to pull those as well?
That's correct.
Does the mover and the seconder agree to approve every item except the cash disbursement and the minutes?
It's fine. Yes.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of approving the Consent Agenda except for cash disbursement and the minutes signify by saying yes.
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 No? That motion carries unanimously. Let's start with the cash disbursement summary on pages 50 and 51. Trustee Lawson?
Okay, so I had submitted an email to you, Mr. Chair, and the President, asking for the labeling of these control numbers. I think it's in the best interest of the people to be able to know what these items are. It's hard for me to read number, so I don't know what the amounts, some of them are 1.4 million, 854,000, 1.3 million. And I think it's just something that maybe we could, I asked to have that presented, and I have not received that for tonight. And so I don't know, as a Board, how can we vote on this if we don't know what we're voting on?
As you know from our communications, I've asked that that, I've discussed that with President Sobchak, and we've agreed that will be reviewed or delegated to the Management Committee. This is the form that has been in place for at least five years. It was partially in place because of security, security concerns and not, you know, identifying individuals who are receiving checks with their accounts or otherwise. It is vetted by our expenditure policies. The budget items are approved by the budget, and our professional staff presents these for approval for reasons I'm really not sure of, because I think they've already been approved. But we will let the Management Committee take a look at that and see if that's something that we should have been concerned about for the last five years that was just raised this week.
Well, I have the option to raise questions when the Board Packet is released, and this is a constituent who asked me for the labeling of these, and I asked to have them available for this vote. Do you have those available?
They're not going to be presented tonight. The Consent Agenda is presented as the, as the agenda was published, and we will vote on it as published. I don't have any reason to believe this is any different than what has happened for the last five years, including the last two years that you have received the packets and voted on them. These have been approved by staff. If you want confirmation from staff, I'm sure they will give it.
That's what I asked for, so you're saying I don't have it for this vote?
Not.
So when I make requests, when we get the Board Packet, what does, does that matter?
When you, when you make requests after the Board Packet has been published, and it is within the authority of a committee, we send it to that committee. When it has been a practice of the Board for five years, I don't intend to stop the practice of approving these expenditures at this point unless the majority of the Board agrees that now we need to not approve these tonight and wait for further review. It is also part of our packet review that is going on that deals with the security of vendors, personal information of individuals and otherwise. So I do not intend to hold this up tonight, and it will go to the Management Committee in the February Meeting.
So when I asked, I mean, staff could also come to me if there's issues with confidentiality on these items, or we can go to an executive session and look at these things, but I'm just, so I'm not allowed to see what these are before I vote on this?
We will review that, the Management Committee will review that and see if any policy change is required. For tonight, I'm going to ask for a motion to approve it as it's been presented, as it's been presented for the last five years.
Oh, okay.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by...
Mr. Chair.
Snyder, just a second, I want to get this for the record. Moved by Trustee Snyder, seconded by Trustee Cross. Dr. Cook, for discussion.
Well, I, I think it's a fair question in terms of some of these big amounts. I would say, though, that all of these items have been pre-approved in the budget process and previous actions. So I, I guess to look at a million four and a million three, just to be reminded what they're for, is a reasonable request. But to go through each one to say, who is this go-to, that's a detail that I think we just have to expect the process to work, and it's, we, we have an internal auditor, an external auditor, and we have several steps in place to find fraud. And I'm, I'm pleased to say that this, this college has been very clean in that regard. But I still also think that, hey, if we wrote a check for a million four to one account, unless that was several pieces of that account, then it's reasonable to know what it was.
If there are individual questions about those, they can be referred to you, Ms. Leers, and I'm sure...
Well, yeah, I would think that we would do that before the Board Meeting.
Well, they, so when you look at the 1-4, for example, on date 12-6, it ranges from 37-921 to ranges 37-927.
So there are several.
So there are multiple, that's, that's a group, so that reflects the ranges to, for that amount. Those are not individual amounts. And those are provided as supplemental A, and supplemental A is requestable by, but we, there's, we'd like to, at the Management Committee, be able to present on this, because it's part of our security concerns. Some checks historically have had personable identical, we've had social security numbers on checks based on government requests in the past, and so putting it public would be a FERPA violation. I can say FERPA now, because we already defined it earlier.
Mr. Chair, I'm not, I'm not suggesting we change anything, but I am, I am saying that any trustee that has a question about that, it's proper to go to the President's office before the Board Meeting or to the, and get direction as to where to go, which I've done, and not play gotcha at a Board Meeting. And so that, that question is fair to ask, but there's a way to do it, and...
My request was submitted within the timeframe, but I'm not given the information to be able to take this vote, so I will be a no.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the cash disbursement summary as presented in the Consent Agenda signify by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, say no?
No.
Six to one, Trustee Lawson is no. Now I have the minutes to the December 12th Board Meeting, which are not numbered and are included as a separate attachment to your packet when you receive it. Is there an addition or correction to the minutes, Trustee Lawson?
Well, I, I would be helpful to have page numbers on it. I don't know how to let you guys know what I'm, what page I'm on.
Right. Page numbers are at the top, in the, in the internal, up at the top left.
The, the minutes are blank.
Upper left, it says page two and then page three. It's not numbered in our packet, but it's numbered on the minutes.
The minutes are attached as an attachment, just like the President's report?
Should go to attachments.
See, up here? Is that what you printed off?
No, I printed the ones that the public gets.
Okay. Can you tell us what the start of the page is?
Is this the minute? I don't know if this is the minutes of the transcripts, I have no idea.
The minutes start with minutes of the Meeting of the Board of Trustees of Johnson County Community College.
And the minutes for December are not posted yet. They have to be approved by the Board first.
Okay, so transcript, is that the same as something with the minutes of the previous?
For the purpose of the public, our, our meetings are recorded electronically, and that is posted on the website a few days after the meeting. In addition, our staff prepares a, hopefully close to verbatim transcript, but not always verbatim, because we don't speak into the microphone and other things. I think what you're referring to is the transcript that can be printed off on the website under About, JCC Trustees, under Leadership and Governance, under Board of Trustees, and then under the tab Recordings and Transcripts. If that's what you're asking about, can we go ahead and approve the minutes of the meeting?
Well, I need to be able to add my vote no on the Board Leadership, so I don't know where, I don't know what page this is, but I need that to be added for the December Board Meeting.
All right. On page five of the minutes as attached to our packet, there's a report of the Nominating Committee, and it says, "Following discussion upon motion by Mr. Musil, seconded by Mr. Lindstrom, which motion unanimously carried the Board of Trustees..." Oh, that's the tabling motion. Let's get back to... Okay, on page eight of the, of the minutes, "Following discussion upon motion by Dr. Cook, seconded by Mr. Cross, it is a recommendation of the Nominating Committee that the Board of Trustees approve the 2020 slate of officers, committee and liaison assignments as amended."
So I would just want to record that I said no, and I think the volume was turned down.
Okay. So the, the reflection in the December 12, 2019 minutes on page eight should reflect that the recommendation was adopted on a six to one vote with Trustee Lawson voting no.
That's correct.
Everybody understand that correction?
I move, we approve the December minutes with that correction.
Seconds.
Moved by Trustee Snyder, seconded by Trustee Smith Everett, that we approve the December 12, 2019 minutes with the correction as indicated on page eight. Any further discussion?
It's Trustee Ingram, unless she said it too. Did she say it?
Oh, I, did you second it?
I was trying to, but she did. It's fine.
You gotta speak up, I heard her.
I heard her.
I thought, I thought Trustee Smith Everett did that. Okay. All in favor of that motion signify by saying yes.
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 Aye.
Oppose, no? That carries unanimously. That concludes the Consent Agenda. We have no executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Trustee Cross, seconded by Trustee Ingram. Not debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yes.
No. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all. Thank you all for staying.